I'm reading the order, 632, if you want the exact time.
Greetings to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody all set?
I'm all set.
Do whatever you want.
All right.
I don't know, I'm totally confused right now.
Nah, you're okay.
That's okay.
To start us off, Mr. Martin, today's the first day of school. You want to update us on the school roof, what you and the committee had gotten done today?
Well, I didn't want to, but I guess I'll have to. The roof was started about a week and a week and a half ago. They started over the academic portion of the building, classroom portion. That is completely done. As of the construction meeting as of last week, they were over the gym and over the kitchen area. And I believe that they've just been moving right along. What they've been doing is, because the new fan units have a long delivery time, what they're doing is they're doing all the construction work and then they're just capping it. So when the fan units come in, all he has to do is untuck the old cap, plug, pop the new fan unit in, and the wiring's already there to just hook it up and get it going.
It looks like, I was there today, and it looks like they're moving right along. It looks like they staged it well, too, so that, you know, activities can go on uninterrupted.
Yep, they were trying to. I know that they had, at one point, they had like 23 men on site. They try and get the work done before school started, so... And I believe the only other parts that they really haven't worked on is the fascia boards. But outside of that, it's been moving right along.
Because I know you and the roof committee, the select board appointed, done a real good job with it. And even without those ventilators, they're using the school on a non-interference basis, correct?
To the best of my knowledge.
Yeah.
I think the only thing, if anything, they were gonna have to try and work around was, when they were doing the gym, I think sometimes the sports practice in the gym...
Have to go outside.
And I think they were just gonna make them go outside, or you want to use like half the gym versus the full gym, or things of that nature, to be able to get through.
I think that's probably the minimal.
Yeah, so...
Good. How we doing on cost? No change orders?
There is one change order. Don't note the prices yet. Right now, we're still within budget of the $1.4 million, okay?
Yeah.
Everything was working out well. What had happened is, is during the walk-through on the roof, it was identified to remove the ventilator unit from the science labs, because it was, we were told that it was not being used. Well, lo and behold, it is being used. So now we have to go back and redo that portion of the roof to put that ventilator back in.
Because the requirements have changed?
No, because the, because the science teacher said, because the science teacher said, yes, he does use it, while when they were on the roof, we were told by the supervisor, building supervisor, that it was not being used. And then there was another issue, I think, with the kitchen. I think there was two ventilator units that were tied together, and they were trying to address that, but I don't think there was a change order on that one. I think they were just relocating prior to the, you know, not replacing one, just relocating it and doing things of that nature.
When I said the requirements would change, I was meaning from the original information you was given to put it out for bid, to what actually is happening as well.
Well, that was a delay for us, because when we originally put it out to bid, we were told that we were gonna replace the roof and replace the ventilators. We get it to the architect and engineers, they've got the plans ready to go, and then I'm asked, told that the control panel doesn't work.
Who told you that?
Mr. Sullivan.
Okay.
John Sullivan. And that, I want to know if it was included as part of the work, and I says, "You never told me." So, went to the engineer, went to that, and that was the delay, because originally, we were gonna look at a start date of early July. And because of the delay and having to redo and redesign some of the work, that caused the delay on our part.
And costs, it's a little more cost than the redesign?
Yep.
Okay. Do you want to do the highlights from the climate change resilience you went for me last week? Or you want to do that some other time? I'm just asking.
Do you want me to just go through what the town administrator wants to present, and then we'll go from there?
That's not like a great idea, how's that? I didn't know. I don't know what you have in your package, I just have all my notes here.
Well, you seem to be guiding me on what you want me to talk about, but I just want to...
Oh, okay.
I just want to cover a few things first.
Okay.
There is a rural policy plan report and conference that'll be being held. It's called the Western Massachusetts Municipal Conference on Saturday, October 5th, at UMass Amherst. It's being held by the Massachusetts Selectments Association. And basically, it's gonna have Massachusetts Housing Economic Development Secretary Mike Caneely. He'll deliver the keynote, and basically, we're gonna have a panel presentation featuring Western Mass Legislature. There'll be four breakout sessions, one on growing partnerships, one on creative solutions for growing revenue, one on growing populations, and one on growing housing opportunities. It's $35 per person, and basically, it's partnership, partnering with the Berkshire County Selectments Association, Franklin County Selectments Association, Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, Franklin Regional Council of Governments, and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So, I think it's a very good thing to try and go to. If none of the board can make it, I'll go in their stead if they so desire. Next item. We have some winter salt bids that have to be put out. The board really doesn't have anything to sign on this. In speaking with Dave DeRosier, there's two types. There's basically plain rock salt, delivered. We use the award to two companies, our primary and our secondary. The primary is in yellow, the secondary is in orange, okay? So what we'd like to do is award regular road salt to Morton Salt at $56.36 a ton. And if they can't deliver, then they'll be able to go to Eastern Minerals at $59 a ton. The second bid is on the second page, which is rock salt treated with magnesium chloride. First bid, we'd like to issue to Morton Salt for $72.86 a ton. And the secondary one would be Champion Salt at $75.15 per ton. That's in case we have a real bad winter and one runs out, we can still go to the other legally. And we'll be notifying the Franklin Regional Council of Governments of said award. Next item. As part of the agenda that you'll be dealing with tonight is the contract for the Sealer Waits and Measures through the Northampton Building Department. Their fee went up for FY '20, it went up from $2,300, I think it's like $3,200 now. In order to cover that, proposing that we increase our fees under Waits and Measures. The last time we raised our fees was 2014. Proposing new fees as of 2019 to go into effect one month after we publish it on our website and publicly post it in the, like, the town clerk's office and water selectmen's office. And if the vote board wants to, we can delay addressing the increases until next meeting. They're very minimal increases.
I'm looking at them now, they are very minimal.
For over a five-year period, really minimal?
Yeah.
You want to make a motion, Jen, if you agree?
Yeah, I will make the motion that the board accepts the increase for, of the Waits and Measures fee schedule for...
It goes to City of Northampton?
Yeah.
I mean, these are for our people, but they do it for us.
We collect a fee.
Right.
And fees all come here.
And then we pay.
We still...
We pay Northampton.
We have a contract with Northampton for the services.
Do we always have the contract with Northampton?
We've had a contract since 2014.
Oh, so these, so this is gone, this fee schedule has gone right along with this contract?
Yes.
Do we have one in South Alley before? I think it's something different.
No, that's different. That is, that was for building commissioners. That was when we're in between building commissioners. We needed a, because we only had a building inspector, and only a building commissioner can issue permits and sign permits, and the state required us to have...
I was thinking it's not about ways and measures before, but...
No.
No, okay.
We used to have our own way back when. And then he decided to retire, and we couldn't find anybody to take on.
All right, I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion on the fee schedule for Waits and Measures? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes are unanimous, so the new fees will be published by Mr. Martin?
And to become effective 30 days after publishing on the town's website and publicly posted in the town clerk's office and water selectmen's office. The next item I have is, received an email today from Chapel Engineering, addressed to Mr. Joyce. He's looking for amendment to his contract for the water main project, the fee to perform the additional services required by just South Alley District 1, and dealing with the crossing of Stony Brook for the water line to get up to about the Pizza Palace area, give or take. It is $40,040, because the board wished to award the amendment for the water main project.
And where were we, I mean, some meetings ago? There was discussion regards that this project was gonna cost more than was anticipated.
I did, I talked about that, yes.
Yeah, well, I didn't just make it up, I knew someone talked about it. So, moving forward, is this feasible to start spending money when we know that project's gonna cost more than what was originally anticipated? And more than what the residents thought it was gonna cost us?
And that's why I'm bringing this in front of the board, because at one point, it was said that the $1.2 million was gonna cover the total cost of bringing the water main up to Amherst Street of five corners, okay? That's why I keep bringing this to the board, because I'm not gonna get into the catch-22 of people then turn around saying, "Well, it's costing more than $1.2," okay? Do we want to continue to invest in engineering services to at least get it out to bid, and then at some point, turn around and say, "No, it's come too costly. We're not gonna sign on with the Mass DOT to have this part of the project done along with the resurfacing of Route 202."
Since we don't have an actual cost, we don't really know what it's gonna cost. It's all estimated now, it's gotta go out to bid.
Right, and the estimates are coming in higher than originally, which was thought, plus some other things came in, too, where, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just going off memory, where people are gonna have to connect at their own cost, where before we started this process, we didn't think that was gonna be an option, whether or not they wanted to.
Correct.
And also, there's a concern whether or not South Hadley can provide enough water.
Right, and that's my biggest concern.
I believe that South Hadley, that's why we have to do that hydrological study that's costing us about $10,000 through tie-in bond, for them to bring out their water model and look at, can they supply it at least to the Amherst Street portion? They're not talking supplying it down Pleasant Street to Morgan Street, or up to East Street, Phase 2 and Phase 3, but they're talked about only going to Amherst Street, okay? That's why I'm trying to keep this board informed of everything, every time something comes out.
And what does that really, how does that really benefit the town if we can only go up to Amherst Street with it, and we can't go any further? If South Hadley says, "We cannot provide any additional water, but we got up to Amherst Street and we can't go any further," then what was the reason to spend that over a million dollars just to get to Amherst Street? How did that benefit the town?
Well, if we can create light commercial corridor, we would see some increased revenue that way. However, I have to say, I will agree with you on this, I don't know if we necessarily...
A lot of land that they're talking about is either used already, or it's actually landlocked.
Landlocked, we might be able to do something with, not saying that we can. Well, no, but it can always be purchased. But that's not in question right now. I don't know. I want to see water come to Granby, I definitely do, but I can't see spending money...
Well, I'm with you, Jen, I like to see that.
I like to gamble, don't get me wrong, don't get me wrong. I like to gamble on things, but this isn't our money. And to spend that much money, A, just to get us to Amherst Street, I'm having a very hard time with that. Especially since we told the town, at some point, we're going from South Hadley to Belcher Town. We don't have the resources, South Hadley apparently doesn't have the resources. So what other options do we have? We have the MWRA, correct? We don't know what it would cost to join the MWRA. We don't know what their water supply would be for us. Would it be feasible to sadly table this where we are before we spend any money and look into our other options?
Well, the only issue that comes out is the five-year rule.
I get that, and that's where we're...
Where it backs it to the wall.
And I get that, it's, do we spend the money now, or do we spend the money later?
The way I'm looking at it, the first segment that we're talking about is from the South Hadley line to 55 West...
To Pizza Palace.
To Pizza Palace. That's what we're really talking about. I think we should at least do that to make all that possible business revenue-producing. Then we have until the year 2023, unless DOT pushes that again, before they're gonna do anything else in Granby.
Right, but South Hadley isn't going to magically be able to supply us water to go further. So, I guess my question is, could we do the first phase using South Hadley's water?
Yes.
And supply the rest of the town with MWRA or another water source? Do we have that option?
South Hadley says they can supply us with 100,000 gallons of water per day.
That's not a lot.
Well, actually, it's quite a bit, when you figure out how much an average household uses.
Oh, well, have you seen my lawn lately?
No, I haven't seen your lawn, I've seen mine.
But going back, I'm sorry, Jen.
No, it's okay.
But going back to what our meeting some time ago with South Alley, their water district, that 100,000 gallons adds up quick, when you talk about the number of houses. That is particularly just, I mean, if you're saying, go from, you know, South Alley to Amherst Street, 100,000 gallons, well, yeah. But as soon as you start going other places, and from my understanding is that they cannot commit to that, and that's why we're gonna have to study, and I'd rather spend the $10,000 to find out what is feasible for us, as far as what water can South Alley actually give us to move forward before we spend that $40,000, $50,000 on the other piece. Let's make sure we can actually get the water to that point. But again, is it gonna cost us, you know, what are we gaining from spending money to get the water brought from the South Alley line to Pizza Palace? We don't gain anything there. The only thing we're gaining at that point, it gives us the avenue to tap into that water resource. But if they can't produce or can't give us enough after that, because the businesses that are there are there.
There's only one area, possibly two, that I can think of that could expand. Mass West. Okay, you could develop that, and then the property between Mass West and the bank.
Is the area...
Yes.
Is the area at Mass West large enough to put in, say, a mini-strip?
I think so.
Yes.
So that could conceivably bring in revenue. And I do agree with getting water to town. I'm just not sure that this is the best use of our funds.
If we're gonna spend a million dollars to do that, and that's as far as we get, it's gonna take us a long time to reap the benefits of spending a million dollars in taxes, to get that back.
A million dollars to 55 or Pizza Palace, it's not gonna take a million dollars to get there.
Even up to Amherst Street. If, that portion of 202, from the, from South Alley line to Amherst Street, it's pretty much full, those areas right now are spoken for, as far as land, except a few parcels. There's not a lot, and the thing is, what can be done with those parcels? And that revenue, within a certain amount of time, can bring in over a million dollars back to the town, if the town's spending on that, I can say, yes. But if we can't say, you know, forecast out 25, 50 years from now, and that extra tax revenue doesn't meet that million dollars, I don't...
I agree with that, and I hadn't planned on doing this now, but since you've brought it up, I will.
I will say that, and I'm forgetting for misquoting, but the journey of a thousand miles begins with a single step. We have to take a step. I just don't know in what direction we have to take it in.
We can't, we can't spend money that is not gonna benefit the town in the long run.
Okay.
I think that's why I say we go forward with the study. My recommendation is go forward with the study, the $10,000, which is being spent with South Alley to see how much water they can, what it can provide us with. That's, that's what we need to know.
You, it's either do both or do none. Because if you don't do the other one from Chapel, then South Hadley's not bringing the water, so why do a study? So it's either do both or do none. Because the contract is going out 14 September, which will be an addendum to it. But what I'm looking at here, and I gave you copies...
But I think what Glenn's saying, Jen, is that if the study comes back that South Hadley can provide us with adequate water, then yes. Spending the extra for Chapel is, no, I'm not gonna say a no-brainer, because I won't put words in his mouth, but it makes more sense.
All I'm saying, by the time you get the study back from Chapel, you're gonna miss the date for putting in the pipes from South Hadley to Little Italy.
Can't we hurry things along?
This is politics.
South Hadley, Little Italy, or South Hadley to Pizza Palace?
No, Little Italy is 55 West State Street, that's where...
Oh, I thought I said Pizza Palace, didn't I?
Well, if you talk to Mass DOT, they use roads, they say, like, to High Street. But if you actually look at the map, it's to 55 West State Street. They just say it's going to the closest road, that makes it easier for them.
Again, I look at, we're gonna spend, what was it, $40,000, $50,000 for Chapel?
Original, the original contract is $53,000. Now, to incorporate some of the changes that South Hadley District, Water District 1 is requiring, they now need another $40,000.
So we're talking about spending over $100,000 to just to find out if we can put water where we want to put it?
Yes. A water line along with the 202...
Extension.
Water, or to the 202 road reconstruction project, yes.
So we're gambling $100,000 on the chance that they may be able to supply the water we need? Am I understanding that correctly?
There's two ways. We were told from just Water District 1, the 100,000 gallons will cover Phase 1 and Phase 2.
Right, but...
They said 100,000 gallons. When we gave them the count of houses, the count of businesses, which Mr. Martin has, they said it would cover Phase 1 and Phase 2.
But that's why we're having a study.
But that's, but now they're saying they're not sure, so we have to have a study to confirm that. I can say I'm a millionaire, but I'm not. I don't mean to be rude, but...
No, but, but see, what has happened is, this project, from when we first started, South Hadley is saying, "Oh, you need this, oh, you need this, oh, no, we don't like that, we want it done this way."
Right, South Hadley, well, let's be honest, South Hadley controls the water, they control what we do.
That's right.
In terms of if we want water, we have to dance to their tune.
You're 100% right.
That is what it is.
That's right.
Hence the reason I've asked, why aren't we exploring the other options and cutting out South Hadley?
We have talked about...
We've talked, but we haven't explored.
Because it costs money.
Everything costs money.
Right, and right now, the way I'm looking at it, is we have a very short suspense date to keep within the five-year rule from the South Hadley line to 55 West State Street to Little Italy. Then we have to year 2023 to figure out what we're gonna do. If we don't do from the South Hadley line to Little Italy, you will never get water from South Hadley.
Correct, and I get that.
Well, how are you gonna get it? You get the five-year rule, you can't dig it up.
Well, we'll be paying, we'll be paying to pull those roads up ourselves, is what will happen. So yes, it's possible, it's financially feasible, not practical.
It's not financially feasible to tear up Route 202 after they do it. It's financially feasible with them in-kind expenses, they were giving us $560,000.
I understand that, Jay, I'm just saying you can't say, can't say no.
And I agree with everything that you're saying, Jay. The benefits that we would be reaping by utilizing the Mass DOT project are amazing, they really are. However, I'm leery of spending $100,000 now for them to say, "Yeah, we can't get you, we can't do it. Our estimates were off." I don't know that I'm comfortable taking that much of a risk. And I am one of the first people to say, "We need water in this town. We need something that will allow businesses to come in and not rely on shallow well, because that's what most of us are."
You have to have infrastructure, whether it's housing or business.
And I get you that, I get that 100%, we need to start bringing that infrastructure in. I'm concerned about spending that kind of money to find out that we can't bring the infrastructure in, or we can only get it to Little Italy. And they were wrong about getting it to Amherst.
And, you know, we also gotta think about doing that, too, that we have how many businesses on that stretch of Route 202, which is gonna have to connect to the pipeline, and I believe it's...
Every lot.
2,000.
Every lot.
Every property.
Every property.
Was it 2,000?
It was 3,500?
It was, I think it was 2 grand for the, for the, to put the stub. And then, and whatever, that brings it to the property line, and then whatever it takes to go from the stub to the building.
So, current property owners, current people that own, not, not property, buildings and things like that, dwellings would have to pay the additional money to have it brought in. And they have to, right? There was no, they have to connect.
They have to connect, they are gonna be required to connect, yes.
So, I'm not gonna say, take Pizza Palace, because it's right over here. You know, that could end up costing them the $2,000 to get the stub there. Who's to say it doesn't cost, I'm just putting numbers out there, another $5,000, $6,000, which is feasible, because I know to connect to like a city line, it's $5,000, $6,000 to just to connect. So, they could be talking $8,000, $10,000 to connect. And that's when we're gonna tell each particular business at this point, that you have to spend $10,000?
Well, we did go around at the beginning of this project, and all the businesses signed a letter to support the project.
Well, they, but...
We didn't have all these additional costs at the time.
That's what I'm saying, so if you went back to those particular businesses right now and said, "Look, we like to do it, but it could cost you upwards of anywhere between, reasonably, anywhere between $7,000 and $10,000, which you'd have to pay." And I can tell you, some of these small businesses are in the, I can't imagine they're in a position to do that.
Or they could look at it as an opportunity for the ability to expand. Right now, some of them are tied because of the size of their wealth. You don't have, they don't have that.
But I can think of the businesses, I can't think really what they would expand into.
Whether it's upgrade...
You're not the upgrade, I mean, as long as they have the well supply, I mean, the well and the...
Correct, but can you count on the wells? A lot of our wells have become contaminated.
I don't know, that's, I mean, they would know that, they would know that. It depends where you are in town, whether or not...
You're right, it does, it does, it definitely does. But, and here is our problem, we are sitting on water that will become unsafe to drink at some point.
I understand that, Jen.
Hence, with the need for water.
Does, this doesn't solve our problem. This gets us up to Amherst.
Correct, and I agree with you on that.
55 West State Street, doesn't get us any further, so what...
And again, this project will only benefit the corridor. And again, this project will only benefit the corridor. It won't benefit the offshoots, it won't benefit Aldridge, Kendall. It's only going to take that corridor, and I get that. But getting water somewhere in town is a start that we have to take. I just don't know if gambling $100,000 to find out if they can get us started is the right road to take. I agree, we have to have water.
There's a lot of variables that come into place. And whether or not South Alley or any other area can provide the water that is needed for Granby, whether, too, there's, can you get the water to the parts of Granby where we say the wells are, could be, or are being contaminated? And that's a study that needs to take place on its own. I don't think we, and you know, I don't think the town can afford to do something like that, to start putting pipes all over the town to do that. Plus, we don't have a water resource at this time. You know, a lot of information has changed since this was brought to the town, and the town voted on it.
I agree.
And in respect to that, that's what I'm looking at as far as making some of the decisions now. It's, you know, it's different information that we have right now. And my first step, I think, would spend the $10,000, because it's a minimal amount to spend, I think, for such a large project, to see if even whether or not South Hadley can provide the necessary water for us. And I know, Jay, you said there's a timeframe, right? Where Chapel, what's the timeframe for it to go out?
14 September.
Okay, and that's when the bid has to go out? Or that's when Chapel has to have their study done by?
Oh, that's when the bid's going out.
Okay.
For Mass DOT.
So how does that affect, because Chapel's study, wouldn't it be done by September 14th?
Chapel already, okay, the study you're talking about, I believe you're talking about the Titan Bond Study for the Hydraulics, not Chapel's.
Well, that's the $10,000 one.
Right, but Chapel is the engineering documents on how to do it. We already have the engineering documents from the South Hadley Line to Amherst Street, because we had to prepare them for the grant that we applied for, the $2 million grant. But then we couldn't accept it, because we had to spend it within one year, when Mass DOT says, we'll see you in 2023.
Right.
So we had to say no to that, because we couldn't afford to do it without the $560,000 in-kind expense they were going to give us.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're saying Chapel already did the engineering?
Okay.
I'm lost.
Let me help you out a little bit.
Thank you.
Mass DOT had a set of drawings that were already done by Chapel regarding the 202 project.
Okay.
Dealing with sidewalks, bike lanes, any other reconstruction that they were going to have to do. They had already identified easements that were going to have to be purchased by the state in order to do their work. I know they're still in the process of negotiating those easements.
Okay.
When we wanted to piggyback on top of the project, what Chapel did was to take and draw another line on the existing drawings, identifying where a water line was going to be put in under the pavement as part of the project.
So they took the existing drawings, took a ruler and drew a...
Just drew a line. For lack of a better word, drew a straight line out and say, here's the water line that's going in now.
Hopefully, it's purple.
Okay? Don't know what color he used, but he used whatever. Those drawings were sent to South Hadley Water District One. Okay? When they reviewed it, they had concerns, because number one, it did not show service connections for each property along the route.
Okay.
Number one.
And was that because at the time, we weren't aware that we had to have them...
Correct.
Okay.
Number two was, it did not identify the placement of fire hydrants along the route.
Okay.
Okay? They raised that issue. District One also raised the issue of, they were going to require a hydrological study to see if they had the proper pressure to be able to supply the water along the route, what our need was going to be versus what they could supply.
Okay, I get that part.
Okay? So Ty and Bond is their water engineer for the district. For $10,000, they're going to dust off their model that they developed for Water District One to see if they can supply water at least to Amber Street.
Right.
That's it. That's all we were going for, because that's as far as we were going with this project.
With this project, I got that part.
They feel that they should be able to supply the water to that area, okay? But no farther than Amber Street.
I got that. I understand that part.
And I believe they were talking about possibly being able to complete the loop for the stub that comes up Morgan Street.
Which is Phase Two.
Okay? Now, what we're being told is that, when we sat with District One, Ty and Bond, Chapel, okay? The additional $40,000 from the original $53,000 to draw the line on the, on the original set of maps, the additional $40,000 is going to, number one, cover their costs to revise the design of the existing 202 drawings, to add a water service connection for each resident within the limits of the new main to be installed, okay? Modifications to the plans to match the project limits of the 202 project to be advertised for construction on September 14th, okay?
Okay.
Submission of an RDA to the Conservation Commission, which we have received, we have advertised, correct, Kathy?
Yes.
To be addressed at the Conservation Commission meeting next week, I believe it is? Right? Next Tuesday night, okay? So that is in process.
Okay.
For them to design a new above-grade crossing for the water main at Stony Brook. Originally, we were talking about...
Going under.
Directional drilling underneath the thing. They, South Alley District One and their consultant, didn't think that was the right way to go. They'd rather hang it from the bridge and go across.
Keep a steady flow.
Even though South Hadley District One direct-drilled under Morgan Street.
Well, that was their project, they could do what they want, I understand.
Okay, so that's what that's going to do.
Okay.
And then revise the plans based upon South Hadley District One's peer, or water consultant, Ty and Bond, to do a peer review of all the existing plans, all the existing proposed engineering work, and to receive their comments, to make sure that it meets what South Hadley is going to need from us.
So we could pay $40,000 to Chapel to have this done, and the peer review could say, no, we don't like it?
Yes.
Is this what I'm understanding?
It's possible, it's possible.
Okay.
Or the peer, the peer consultant can say, no, I think we ought to do this, we think you ought to do that, we need...
Which will then cost us more money, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Potentially, yes.
Potentially, yes. We're going to work in potentials here. Okay, now, my question is, so it goes out to bid the 14th. So has Chapel already done these drawings? Or are they somehow going to manage to get them in 11 days?
They are, from what I understand, they're already done, but they won't release them to us until they pay.
Fair enough, I get it. You don't release the product until it's paid for? Okay, so they are already done?
Because see, when we applied for that $2 million grant for MBB, we had to spend the $53,000 to come up with these drawings. The state let us use all the Route 202, Mass DOT stuff they had. And like you and Chris said, Chapel drew a line for a water line through it.
Could we potentially sign this contract the 12th to make it in time for the 14th bid?
Probably not.
Okay. When's the latest we could sign this contract to get it in, in time? Please don't tell me tonight.
Well, since tonight's the 8th and the 3rd.
How long will it take to execute it? I guess I'm asking is, do we have enough time to quickly explore any feasible option? Meaning MWRA or anything like that?
Not engineering-wise, no.
Okay. That doesn't help me.
My concern was, with this whole project, is that when it was presented to town meeting, it was said that all the town ever does do is studies, but never...
Never follows through.
Follows through on the studies.
100%.
This sounds familiar, that we are now requiring to do all these studies for something that may or may not occur. That's my only concern with, as these prices keep going up. You know, $53,000 was fine to piggyback. But now District One requires this, requires that, brings up issues about permits, brings up issues about hydrological studies. They want to know what type of soils are under 202. They want to know about directional drilling. Instead of doing directional drilling, hanging an insulated pipe off the side of the bridge.
And remember, when us three were there at Water District One Wood, Chris, they didn't bring none of this up.
That leads me to, is this their way of saying, we don't want to give you this, we're just going to make it as difficult as possible?
I don't think that's it. I think, I remember their meeting with them, and they were very cordial and very saying, they're saying that they wanted to work with us, they wanted to provide us water. But, and reality is, is it feasible for them to do so? They're, they're in it to make money.
And they would be making money off the water that they provide to us. But I would assume that, you know, their water department would have some idea of what they're talking about, and would have known that we were going to need this information. So as a parent, I'm sure when your kids have asked for something and you didn't really want to give it to them, you made it as unpleasant as possible, so that they finally just gave up. I know I do frequently. You know, and I'm not saying that they're doing it deliberately, but I'm saying, is it, case in point, I'm just going to use, we have to have a new septic put in, and the project is a nightmare. So much so that they keep putting it off, because they don't want to deal with it. Thankfully, it's not major, we're doing it before it becomes major. But it keeps getting put off, and is this the case? Are they just going to keep heaping things on us that we need? I want water in Granby, 100%, I want water in Granby.
I think what, and this is just my opinion, I think, with South Alley, is operating in good faith. I have no reason to believe that they're not. But again, I also look at, is, is reality is that if we can only bring water up to Amber Street, what are we solving for the town? If we can't go any further than Amber Street, what are we doing for the town? We're not solving any problems.
Well, we're taking the first step, and my question is, if we get water... Stop. If we get water to Amherst, if we get water to Amherst, can we get water from somewhere else? Is the question, to supply the rest of the corridor?
There's two ways to do it.
MWRA?
Which would increase, would give us a water supply, which would add to South Hadley, which we could go up.
Correct.
But looking at it expense-wise, with Dave DeRosa or myself, we don't like the idea of pumping water uphill.
That takes more...
Because it's going to cost more than maintenance and everything like that. And South Hadley's going to own whatever we build.
Correct.
We've had discussions with the state about doing piping from the Nashville Reservoir to Dufrane's Park.
Building a water tower?
Exactly.
Okay.
And all of that would be downhill.
Okay.
Or some sort of structure.
Or some sort of structure.
Not just a tower, some sort of a structure.
Because Dufrane's is a high point.
Correct.
We've had discussions with that, with the governor's representative, our own...
With the Mass Regional Director.
Okay, that, so conceivably, we could supply the rest of the town utilizing that aspect.
That is what our ultimate hope is, but we would still have to do it under Route 202.
Along, correct.
That would be the spine.
That would be the spine of it, okay. So South Hadley would own our water from South Hadley to Amherst?
I would say from South Hadley to Morgan Street.
Okay, South Hadley to Morgan, they would own all of that, and then we would own...
Whatever's left.
Whatever's left. Okay, so it's possible that we could split it that way, and we wouldn't just stop. So the rest of the town, or at least the rest of the corridor, would be able to have access to this water to build, improve, whatever they needed.
But you have to stay on Mass DOT schedule. That's the biggest back-to-the-wall stuff. In addition to South Hadley, if they're going to own it, they're going to give us new requirements. If we own it, we establish our own requirements with Mass DOT.
Right, so, but we can get, we could get this part of the project done and kind of wash our hands of South Hadley, once they get us to where we need to be, and just deal with that small corridor.
Right, let them have the business district downtown here.
Is that where we're going with this?
Well, everything you just talked about are all what-ifs.
Everything's a what-if until it becomes reality.
Right, it's what-if. There's no cost projected with that. Whether it's even feasible for the town to afford something like that, to build a water tower, to move water throughout the town, you're talking millions and millions of dollars. This town does not have millions and millions of dollars to spend that way. It doesn't. So I go back to, and I go back to this, where this was presented at town meeting. Things have changed, that the information was presented to the town. I don't think it's fair to us to start changing things when the town voted on something that was given to them a certain way, and things are changing. I think it's only fair to us to bring it back to the town and let this town decide what they want to do with their money. Things, that the facts are not the facts anymore, or what was brought to them in that town meeting. And I think it's unfair of us to start saying, well, we can do this, we can do that. Well, this is a what-if, this may happen, this may not happen. It's not our money to spend, it's the town's money to spend. And I think they were presented with information, and me as a town person, I was presented with information, and I know that information has changed now. And I don't know if I'm willing to have you spend my money that way, because there's, there's no, there's all what-ifs, and there's no guarantees. If you can put guarantees in front of me and tell me, we can do this, we can do that, that's great. But, you know, and to talk about studies and stuff like that, well, unfortunately, sometimes we need, we need to do studies to find out what is feasible and what things are going to cost us. And that's the route we need to go down. I think, again, that's something that town has to say, yes, we're okay doing that. Do people want a huge water tower, like South Hadley has, at Dufrane's Park, in the middle of Dufrane Park? Or is that going to be enough to supply what we need to supply? What else is involved? I know, speaking with the Water District of South Hadley, they talk about their water tower, and there's parts of South Hadley where the water pressure dips, because the tower's only so high, and it's based on elevation throughout the town. So those are things that this town has to look into as well. There are some high points in this town. I take the, the top, the highest point of Amber Street, or any, any streets to figure out where you need to be as far as how high your water tower needs to be. If not, you come in to start pumping water. You start coming to pumping water, those pumps are very expensive. Those pumps fail, they get very expensive. So reality is, I'm just saying, is that, I agree, you know, the town needs water, because it does make a difference.
Right.
But we need to figure out a correct way how to do it. And that's something that, it's a long-term plan. We know we start here, we can move on to step two, step three, step four, step five. I think it's wrong of us to say, we're going to start here at step one, and hope step two, step three, step four, step five play out.
I 100% agree with you on that. I am in your corner on that one. Quick question. Alex, do you have the ability to beep things out?
No.
No, you don't want that done.
No.
Okay, just checking. So, yeah. There was a saying that my grandfather used to have, and I'm not going to say what it is right now. But I think it's time that, the town has to take a step forward, 100%. Do I agree with the steps that we're having to take right now? No. Am I comfortable with them? No. Is it costing us money? Yes, 100%. If what everybody is saying is true, is we can't go forward even with any of it, If what everybody is saying is true, is we can't go forward even with any of it, without giving Chapel this money, then it sucks, really does. But I think we have to do this, to take that step, and maybe we're going to have to take it on faith that those studies are going to come out in our favor, and it's what we want, to get us where we want, so that we can take the next couple of years to explore options on how to get it to the rest of the town.
And I agree with you. Because our backs against the wall.
We are against the wall, and I don't like it.
I don't either.
Don't like it 100%.
I don't like South Hadley making changes.
Nope.
But if they can do direct drilling under Morgan Street when they're doing it on their project, that's why Dave recommended doing direct drilling under Stony Brook on this project, because that's what they did. But when they saw it, mm, no, no, we don't want direct drilling. We want the piers, we want it all insulated, we all want this. Like you said, we're at their mercy.
And I will say, I believe that the town, the town's members do want to see this project, because they did approve it. Given, yes, it was a single dollar amount that they approved, 100%, we're going over that. But the approval of that, which is money that we didn't really have to begin with anyway, shows that they want to see progress.
That we have permission to borrow up to 1.2 million.
Right, and I get that. If we, if spending this is going to get us there, then I don't like it, I really don't. But I don't see a choice.
I don't see a choice either, unfortunately. I agree everything that you said, but right now, because of that five-year rule, if we don't go forward and let Mass DOT pay for everything that's underneath that we're promised, whether it's soil samples, whether it's surveying, like Chris says, all the maps, and we're just adding a line to it, and then they're going to pay for the police details, they're going to pay for the asphalt, they're going to pay for everything like that, if we go with prior to them on Route 202. If we don't do that, we lose all that, and if we don't do that, we can definitely not afford anything.
What would you say that the cost of the in-kind services, so to speak, would be between detail and all of that?
I can just tell you, from when we put the last grant together, it was for the construction from South Hadley Line to Amherst Street, and the drawings for Phase Two and Three came to $2.7 million to do all of that work. Okay. For the grant, we just put in, for the Amherst side, I got the numbers here somewhere, trying to remember where I put them. But the bottom line is, we were, the total amount to do Amherst was 1.9, and if we got the grant, we had to pay, which is up to 2 million, we had to pay a maximum of 25%. So for round numbers, say 2 million, for our 25%, we had to pay, what's 25% of 2 million?
500,000.
500,000. Okay, 500, we had to pay 500,000. Okay, they were coming back and saying, "We could do in-kind expenses for, like I said, the police details, the asphalt, and all of that," and it came down that we were going to end up paying 120,000 for the project with the grant, to Amherst Street. And that's what the numbers that we presented at the Economic Development Committee, it's the numbers we presented before, we gave it to the Finance Committee, that's what we were going to pay. But when Mass DOT changed the rules, says we are not going to do five corners until 2023, that killed everything from there. We were stopped, because there would be no in-kind expenses, no nothing. We'd have to pay it all ourself, because they weren't doing it.
Okay.
So that's why we said, "No, we'll wait." Now we got this other dilemma. Mass DOT is doing South Hadley, which includes about a quarter mile of Granby, which is from the Granby Line to 55 West State Street. If we don't do that quarter mile of piping now, we cannot afford to do it in the future, because with the five-year rule and the total cost with that. So I believe we should do, do Little Italy, and then it gives us to 2023 to go out and do all this other investigation, because then we still have an option. If we don't do this quarter mile now, you might as well forget the study, forget everything, we're just not going to do it. Granby, you're on your own, there's nothing we can do.
Well, Jay, first of all, that's not fair. You can't say that, because there's always a means to do it in the future if we wish to do it. Could it cost more? It could. There's no, there's no question about that. But also, we need to look at what is reasonable for us to spend money on. If this, if this project here is to spend money to get us to that point, and the reality is, we're trying to, we're going to wait to see if we can go any further, whether it's yes and no. We don't even know if WMR would even be willing to supply water to us. We don't know that for a fact. There's nothing written that's saying that they would give us water or bring it down this far. There's also equation here, it could cost each business from that area up to possibly $10,000 to hook up to the water. That's information that these business owners didn't know beforehand, that wasn't presented to that. There's also some more information that needs to be presented to the town as far as, hey, we don't know if we can go any further with the water. This might be it. We may only be able to go up the Amber Street, and that's it. I don't think we're, I don't think we're being fair to, to the town, is, just, things have changed.
It keeps not saying we're being fair to the town. I think we're being as fair to the town as we can possibly be, given the constraints that we're under. We have to make a decision. Do we go the quarter mile extension from South Hadley Line to 55 West State Street and not? That's the question.
No, the question is, the town said yes to funding certain things based on information they were given.
That's correct.
That information has changed.
And if you want to call a town meeting, we can make a motion to call a town meeting, but when you get there, it's too late, the project is over. We don't have the time.
The project's not over. It just means that other, we might have looked at other options to do such things.
The project is over, Glenn. If you don't get the in-kind expenses, the project is over.
Piggybacking on the Route 202 project will be passed.
That's correct.
Right, so we will have to pay the details, the digging.
So the issue is, is once that happens, either we can try and go out to bid on a room to try and do it in the same construction time as 202 is occurring, or we have that five-year moratorium that we are obliged not to open up the room.
Which I go back to saying that, saying it could never happen is an untrue statement. Saying we can't do it is untrue statement. That's, that's all I'm saying. Would it cost more money? Absolutely.
We wouldn't be able to do it at a reduced cost by piggybacking on the 202.
No, and I agree 100% with that. Again, I just think, you know, I don't see what the benefit to the town is. It just bringing up the Amber Street, not even Amber Street, the 55 West State Street, if we can't go any further. We have no information at this point that's telling us that we could. That's, that's all I'm saying. We don't have that information. I think it's unfair. I mean, I'm a taxpayer, just like everybody else in this town is, and that's, to me, I know information was given to me, and I thought, gee, yeah, we're going to supply water all the way up 202. That's the way I took that, at the town meeting, and what I'm understanding now is, no, that's not the case. We can get to 55 West State Street.
Because that is as far as DOT is planning to do their retrofit of 202 at this time. That's as far as they're planning on going right now.
But they got, right, but even though they're going to go further, it was sold, it was told to the town that, yes, we will piggyback on that for each particular area, but if we don't have any water to keep on going, that's what I'm saying, what benefit is it really to the rest of the town? The other, you know, 4,000 residents that are paying taxes if we only did this little section? That's all I'm saying. I think information has changed, and I, and I, again, I'd say, remember when I was in the town meeting listening, that the pitcher was thinking that the water was going to go all the way up 202, almost from the South Hadley Line to the Belcher Town Line?
End stages as we go up with Mass DOT.
I mean, but if you can't get the water, then this may not even be possible. That's what I'm saying. There's no, there's no, no one's saying us, "Yes, we can provide you with water." It's not being said anywhere. That's, that's just where I am with it.
My brain is filled with numbers, and I can't pull the one that I want out of it. What did we approve at town for the project?
1.2 million.
1.2, okay. Correct, because we don't. Okay, so how much are we projected to go over that?
We have no idea if we're going to be over or under until the bid would come back with the Mass DOT project.
Okay.
All we, all we have up to date is estimates.
Our estimates are the 1.2 that we, that we approved?
Right, we don't even have what it's exactly going to cost to go to 55 West State Street unless we pay Chapel the money to release the drawings to go out with Mass DOT's bid. Mass DOT's bid will give us the firm price, just like when Chris did the roof on the junior senior high school. He, he made up all the requirements, went out for request for proposals, got proposals and bids back. That's when you know your exact numbers are, when that comes back. And it's, well, they say, Chris, how many days was it? Was it 220 days or something?
20 days.
Do we have to back out?
That they have to accept the bid.
That's it. They have 220 days from 14 September to accept the bid, and we can back out any time.
Prior to that.
Up to the 220th day.
Okay. So we could conceivably still come in at the 1.2 million that the town, we promised the town that it would be.
That is possible.
Conceivably. Hypothetically, who knows?
Again, when we did the estimates with Dave DeRocher and Chapel, we used $250 a foot to put in a water pipeline.
Right, and I remember that. We thought that was being good based on.
Right, because based upon last year, South Hadley, Water District Two paid $213 a foot to do Route 116.
Right.
So that's why we did $250 a foot.
Conservative.
Because we'd rather come back and say, "Hey, we, just like Chris, we'd rather the roof come in under budget than over budget."
Mm-hmm.
Well, we want everything to come in under budget. We don't, we don't want to tell the people any falsehoods. The biggest problem we have with this project right now is South Hadley has changed some of the conditions, which is out of our control.
Right.
If we want the South Hadley water, we've got to work with their conditions.
Okay.
I was fine with the direct drilling going right under Stony Brook.
But that's not our choice, and I get that's taken, the power that is taken out of our hands, we have to play by their rules.
That's unfortunate truth.
My question is, is I'm trying to figure out how much extra the town would have to pay. If we, if we approve this, and it goes out to bid, and we come in under, are we just going to be over 5,000 based on what we're expend, our expenditures now?
All I can give you is estimates of what people, until the actual price comes back from the actual bid is, I'm not going to know the, what they're going to say.
No, I know.
But Jay, you've been throwing out 1.9 million.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yep.
That we apply for MVP funds, Minimal Vulnerability Program funds, okay? And that if we are successful in receiving those monies in the amounts that we want, that 1.9 million will only cost us $500,000.
That's correct, 25%. And you can minus, according to Lieutenant Governor, you can minus the in-kind off of that 25%. Whatever, in other words, whatever they cost in asphalt, they cost in police detail, you can minus that off, your 25%, it's in-kind.
But again, it's, but again, it's the what-ifs. You're still in the what-ifs. You're still going to be competing with other communities for those MVP funds.
Yep.
Okay, so who knows what you would end up getting?
You're right.
Okay? It's the gamble again. Okay? Are you willing to roll the dice and say you're going to get something? That's why, I'm just bringing this to the board, because it's a tough decision to make. I'm going to tell you that much right now.
I understand 100%, and that was just one of my concerns, are the what-ifs. If, you know, like you said, there's a lot of people competing for the money, and they want just as much as we do, MVP funds, and true, we may not end up put as much as we're hoping for. We may, and we don't know. But also, just so, at this particular time, we're looking at the town to spend an additional $50,000. $40,000 for Chapel, just to say, here's, here's a design, you can have them now, an additional $10,000 to, for tie and bond, to do this study for South Hadley, to say yes or no, we can, we can give you enough water.
And the email today, which I forwarded to Chris, the next MVP open period to put
in for another grant application is the end of September. If we have these drawings from Chapel, we can put in for another MVP grant to cover the cost from the South Hadley Line to Little Italy, minus the 25%, which would then be minus the in-kind expenses.
But unfortunately, MVP grants, it's not real money until you actually know what you have.
Nothing in this life is going to be real. I mean, when you get a house, you take out a mortgage.
Yeah.
Okay.
And all the mortgage is for what the house is worth.
You take a gamble on it, though, that your property value is not going to drop.
That's right. And you make a gamble that you're going to be in good health and everything else as far as going along to pay the mortgage.
I get it. I don't like it, but I get it.
Pairs up with this.
Our backs are to the wall.
It is, and I'm only in favor.
Don't matter if our backs are to the wall, sorry, Jay, go ahead.
I'm only in favor, right now, of funding the drawings. It's going to do us two things. It's going to give us a total price to give to Little Italy from the South Hadley Line. That's what it's going to give us.
So that drawing will give us what we need?
Well, it'll give us the estimate, until the bidder, the person that's actually going to do the work says, "I'm going to do it for this amount of money, you don't know." It'll give us an estimate, until the person, just like the roof did, like Chris went out and he did a cost estimation for this junior senior high school roof. He came out with 1.4 million. Okay? Then he put it out for bid. What was the exact amount it came in for, Chris, on the bid for the roof?
Well, the roof itself is 1,036, so I planned a million.
Yeah.
So it came in 36,000 more than what I planned.
Okay.
Which is not bad in the grand scheme of things, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay.
That is.
But the architecture contract came in less than what I projected.
So it balances off.
And that, I guess there's, that is what I'm trying to balance in my head. Is what we're expending now potentially going to balance out with what we, the information that we find? And if it does, I am 100% okay with all of it, because we need it.
If we don't have the drawings.
We'll never know, right?
We can't be part of the contract, and we can't put in for the MVP grant, because we have no engineering justification why we're going to spend the money.
Okay.
That's the problem.
Okay.
It's just like when we were talking last week. If we don't have the right data to put the engineering specs, we can't justify it to put in for a grant application. It's the same thing over and over again. You get your requirements, you do your estimates, you put it out to the appropriate people and say, "This is what I'm estimating it's going to cost. Will you give me some money upfront for a grant to help me do this?"
Okay.
And you justify the project. As Chris stated, this is a competition between ourselves and 351 total communities in the state of Massachusetts. Like Chris says, it's, it's a roll of the dice. We're going to get part of it, we're going to get none of it, we're going to get all of it? I can't, I'm not a fortune teller, I can't do it.
Well, I'll get you a crystal ball for Christmas.
So looking at it, it was $50,000 for more or less, not a study, because it's, it's not really a study. The $10,000 is a study.
50 is the drawings.
The 40,000.
40 is the drawings.
For the drawing, so for us to move forward, and I, again, and I think $50,000 of a $2 million project is, is small.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And with that $50,000, if we can get facts, which I want is facts, not what-ifs or what-if. And with that $50,000, if we can get facts, which I want is facts, not what-ifs or what could be or what can't be, then I'm okay with that. Because I really want to know what South Hadley can bring us for water. And the reality after that is, you know, then they, and I think bringing it back to the town after we have additional information and real numbers and what facts are. Because again, I go back to that town meeting, and the town was told, oh, yes, we're going to bring water all the way up down 202 for you, and you're going to have to pay a small portion, don't worry, we're going to get grants to pay for that. And I know I live in a lot, but in reality is that's what people, that's what people are feeling in there.
Right. When the planning board comes with their zoning bylaws, we're going to go on the same special town meeting, we're going to tell them, this is the changes, do you want us to continue or not? We funded as much as we can for as smart as we can, do you want us to go forward or not? Here are the new facts. We can only give you the facts which we know as of today. I can't tell you the facts are going to change tomorrow or not. I don't have an idea.
We won't know until that bid goes, but this, you're saying that this report, this drawing, will give us fairly good estimate on where we could expect to be?
I'll let Chrissy answer that because he's given the same information as I've been given.
What they come out with for the bid, correct?
This money will get a set of drawings to put out the bid, that you will then have a definitive fact on the construction cost to get it piped and installed.
So, for 40,000 for the contract, we will have definitive estimates on what it's going to cost us?
Estimate, yes.
Estimates, not price, estimate.
Because it has to go out to bid to give you a definitive price.
Correct.
But it will get you out to bid.
Right.
So, we will have definitives, which at that point, once it goes out to bid, we then have 220 days where we can take it to the town and say, look.
That's it.
We told you this, it's not happening, do you want us to go forward or do you not? We'll have that ability?
We, yeah.
Let's just call the vote because I, we've wasted plenty of time on this.
That's what I said, we'll do the 55 West State Street, then we bring this new information to the town, because we have to cover the five-year rule for the quarter mile, and then go from there.
I'm going to make a motion at this time that we authorize the $40,000 to be paid out to Chapel for the additional plans that they have for us.
Enter into an amendment to his original contract.
Okay, enter into an amendment with the original contract that we have with them. And the additional $10,000 to be paid to tie and bond for, pretty much the town of South Hadley to let us know how much water is they can provide to the town of Grand Bay.
And you're going to authorize me to sign such contracts?
Yes, authorize our town administrator to sign the contract.
I will second that motion, Glenn.
Okay, is there any more discussion on this article of the bids, the estimates, and the studies?
The only other discussion, but note I'm going to make, is to understand that, and Chris had mentioned it early on, that the town, the voters, are always concerned with us spending money for studies, and we don't go anywhere with it. At this particular time, I think it's a need to do so. I don't look at is our back up against the wall. I think it's us making a sound decision so we can get additional facts to move forward with this project.
Okay, but just for clarification, the $10,000 is for a study requested by the town of South Hadley. The $40,000 is for the actual drawings that will go out to bid. That's not a study. That's the actual drawings.
I didn't say it was.
No, I'm just so everybody understands what we're.
Well, that's what my motion was in the beginning.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's clear. Okay, hearing no more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's passed unanimously, we're going to go ahead and see where we go. At the same time, when we get those drawings, we will put in for the MVP grant, which will come out the end of September, and see if they'll give us some more money back to help cut our expenses, just like we did before.
Let's keep our fingers crossed.
That's all we can do.
But we know beforehand, with the MVP grants, what we'll be getting before entering into a contract with somebody?
I wouldn't say yes, because they only give you one year to spend the money. So, if you're talking 220 days to put out a contract, you're pretty close to getting to a year. So, they, we have, they have to tell us what we're getting, so that would be added into our factor. We would know that.
Leave it up to Chris.
And the R F R.
Yeah.
Identify when the award date would be?
They're going to give us that on 11 September, I think I sent it out, we have to go to a briefing on it.
So, the R F R did not indicate an award date?
No, it said in late September, will be our, the applications will be going.
So, no, we do not know that at this point in time, Glenn.
And that's what I said, 11 September at 1:30, they have the briefing on it, is the one I chose to go to, because it's the closest for us. Anybody else wants to go to it, they're more than welcome to it, but you've got to register Want to move on, Chris?
Well, I'm going to ask you this question.
Go right ahead.
With the amount of time we spent on two topics, do you want to keep going or allow citizen participation to be moved up to the top of the agenda? Because it almost looks like we're going to be here probably till about 9:30-ish, easily?
I don't have a problem with that at all.
It's 8 o'clock, and we still have a full agenda of stuff that we haven't even touched.
I don't have a problem with that at all. We'll do citizen participation now.
So, Mr. Chairman, who are you calling up first?
Oh, I'll let the clerk decide.
Oh.
Because she's got her.
I'll make it fair, gentlemen.
That wasn't very fair.
Shh.
Mr. Schalus, step on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good. I watched the video of the last select board meeting, where you noted that you had had your executive session with the lawyers. And since I've gotten a lot of phone calls and emails from the group on the petition from July, asking about what I assume may have been the conversation you had with the lawyer regarding the interpretation of the cease and desist. Like, they keep asking me, have I heard anything, have I heard anything? So, I was coming tonight, I would have tried to be on the agenda, but, you know, I didn't have time to request that and be here. So, I know I'm limited in time, and you're not required to respond to my questions during the session. But I was wondering if there's any update you can provide, both for me or for people watching on video, about what the building inspector, interpretation of the cease and desist, if that's going to be formalized? Because we as residents, that neighbor of the property up there, need to know when we should call and say that we believe the cease and desist is being violated? And if it's still going to continue to be shooting position only, and not the rest of the expanded area, then we are wasting the police officer's time by calling to say that they're violating the cease and desist if the building inspector doesn't view that as violating the cease and desist? So, it's become a matter of interpretation. I believe it should be all of the expansion, because the cease and desist should be addressing the violation that it relates to, which is a substantial expansion, not a shooting position. But my opinion, as I've been told many times, is my opinion. So, any update you can provide, and we had requested something formal, you know, from the select board or from the building inspector, clarifying his position on this issue? And can we expect that? If so, in what timeframe?
I'm going to give that one to you, Mr. Jeff.
I'm going to give it to Mr. Martin before I say something I'm not supposed to from executive session.
Well, number one, I wasn't at the last meeting.
Exactly.
How can I, how can I respond to something that I wasn't present for?
That's a good point.
I will say, Joe, though, you did ask, who asked the building, told the building inspector not to enforce the cease and desist? I think that was one of your questions.
Who told him to interpret it to be shooting position? Lower shooting shed for violation one, upper shooting pad for violation two.
Well, I think there was a question regarding a comment he made at the April Z B A meeting, or is that he was told not to do this? I asked him direct, he said, nobody, he never said that. Nobody ever told him not to do anything.
Well, I could see that, I could show you the video, he said twice that same night. He said, this is not my decision, I'm doing what I'm told.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm not arguing with you. I asked him point-blank, who told you that? Nobody told me that, and I never said that. Well, I can't answer beyond that, okay?
Because that was his response to the Z B A, to our appeals of his decision, so if that's incorrect, we need to go back to the Z B A.
I'm not arguing that with you, but I did ask that question of him. I did ask our attorney, did he instruct him to interpret it a certain way? Special counsel said, no, he never told him that either. I can answer that question for you. As to any of the other stuff, I can't answer because I wasn't present during the executive session and the discussions.
Could we request something in writing in how he does interpret the cease and desist and what it covers? What does he see as the cease and desist covering? So, we as a budding, adjoining residents know when we believe what the town believes is being violated. Because when Mr. Sharnacki cited, and cited on video back in September of 2017, he said the full range, and he goes like this. He didn't say upper shooting position, and if they go 980 yards instead of 1,015, they're perfectly fine.
And under the eyes of the law, each one of these board members can have their opinion, just like you have your opinion.
Of course, yes.
The only one that matters is the zoning enforcement officer.
And that's why I'm asking, can we get something from the zoning enforcement officer about what his interpretation of the cease and desist is? Because I would think the land court would want that as well. What does this consider the substantial expansion that that cease and desist is relating to? That only makes sense to me.
I think land court is a little different from just what the cease and desist interpretation is. I think that there's a few other things going on there that will be determined once the judge in Boston takes on the case again. Because they failed to do things that they were ordered to do.
Right.
Okay? And I don't think the judge will look kindly upon them not following.
I know, because they tried to withdraw without prejudice as soon as they realized that they may not go their way on that application, so, yeah, they didn't want it back to the judge.
But we won't go there.
That's my opinion.
We won't go there. I won't go there as a town official because I don't want to jeopardize anything on the upcoming readresment by the upper court.
And if the lawyer, we prefer that the building inspector doesn't want to put something in writing, is it possible, because I was, you know, told not to go talk to any people, could I go sit and talk with the building inspector now that maybe things have changed since the berman has passed, about what his view of this is? And, you know, I mean, I just want to understand what the town views as being covered by the substantial expansion? Because that violation was cited based on the satellite photos we provided, showing the changes in that site from 2010 to current. That was a substantial expansion that was meant to be addressed by that cease and desist. Never mind all the conditions that they violated from the 2010 permit that you were very clear last October that is still in effect. And Mr. Briggs told me in the letter when I asked him to enforce the other six conditions, or the seven of the eight conditions, instead of just start and stop time, that he deferred and chose not to address that concern. So, he chose not to enforce those conditions. And I have that in the letter, I mean, that he said that. So, those conditions are still out there. Those are conditions of vegetation, backstop location, and topography that are clearly been violated since the 2010 special permit. Any satellite photo view can see in 2010, they had one backstop cleared from the trees, and now that 100-yard backstop has moved over in front of the pond, which wasn't there either, and all the rest of it is cleared, going back to 1,000 yards. So, and I know I'm limited to two minutes, and you're going to have a long night, and I don't want to take up too much time, but I, like I said, I'm getting calls and emails consistently, you know, from the other petitioners. And I guess my next option is going to have to be is to try to draft my own article for the next special town meeting, get the 100 signatures to, you know, have the voters. And I don't want to do that, I don't want to get involved with the lawyers doing. You know, I don't want to have the town vote to say, yes, we're going to force the building inspector to enforce the 2010 conditions, you know?
But even the town can't force them to do it.
The town can't vote and require him to enforce his conditions?
Because under Mass General Law, it's the zoning enforcement officer's opinion only. Nobody can force them. You turn around and try and dictate to him what he has to do, we're in violation of Mass General Law. That's the problem we're running into, okay? We go through this building inspector, we get another building inspector. He may have a completely different take on the cease and desist than what this one has, just like the prior one probably had a completely different take. What I will do, I will get a hold of special counsel. I will ask him, can the board request the zoning enforcement officer to put down in writing what his exact interpretation of the existing cease and desist order is? That's all I can do.
Right.
Okay?
And I would like to know that, yes, yeah.
But, and that's all I can promise you at this point.
Especially if he's saying what he said on video is a misstatement, or he misspoke, or what, because he's clearly said it, he said it twice, that's it.
I'm not refuting it, all I'm saying is, I asked the building inspector in front of a witness, and he said, he never said that. Okay? So, I said, but who directed you to say what you said? Nobody. And then he said, I never said that.
He told me he was doing what he was told when I went up after he sent me the letter on his visit from September of last.
Nobody can tell him what to do.
I understand that the state law, nobody can tell.
He has Mass General Law behind him.
Right, the only one that can question his decisions is the Z B A. So, people can question his decisions.
The Z B A and appeals court.
And the appeals court, well, yeah, they question the Z B A's decisions.
And if someone takes it to court, the board of selectmen isn't going to go, town council isn't going to go, the zoning enforcement officer is going to go to explain his actions. And that's all there is to it.
I will probably also contact the chairman of the Z B A, because if that's his statement, and I have the video here now to show that, that his statements to the Z B A are relating to both my complaint and Mr. Polchlopec's complaint of why he denied addressing our concerns, especially Mr. Polchlopec's, which is the target right up against his property line that's at 1,000 yards, why wasn't that considered part of the expansion? And he clearly says, I am empathetic, I understand your concerns, I am doing what I'm told, this is not my decision. And he said that twice that night.
The concern we have, no, I'll just lay it out to you, the concern we have is Mr. Polchlopec is bringing up safety concerns.
Yes.
Safety concerns were not addressed in the original cease and desist language.
Yeah, but it's a zoning issue, it's an expansion issue.
No, you got, listen to what I'm saying. We did not specifically address safety concerns in the cease and desist. We cannot add to that cease and desist with new concerns.
But it's still an expansion, are they using the area?
But the issue is, if there's a issue regarding safety, because it was not mentioned in the original cease and desist, we have no standing to try and enforce safety under the existing cease and desist order.
Right, but under that order, the expansion, that target that is at the 1,000 yards is the furthest point of expansion.
Under the existing, the way the cease and desist was worded, we can only enforce the way it was worded.
1,000-plus yard range, it becomes an interpretation that the range is only the shooting position. The range is the distance between two points, it's between the shooting position and the target.
And it was identified as the 1,015-yard range.
Which is what we called it in our complaint, that was an adjective, not a script.
But it is a, it was a specific distance range.
Right, but it was relating to the violation.
It was a specific distance range. And you and I will go round and round on this, because it is, it, lawyers, as you well know, live by the written word.
Well, and the lawyer that argued before the Z B A in defense of your decision clearly saw that it was a full expansion, not shooting position.
And that's his, and that's his interpretation. But he cannot tell the zoning enforcement officer what his interpretation is of that. He can advise him, but it's the zoning enforcement officer who's the only one who has the authority to make those decisions.
Well, we'll see what, if you talk to the lawyer and see what he will allow the building inspector to do. But then if the building inspector, I will bring in my video on my laptop or my tablet, and I'll sit in his office with you, and we'll play it back that he said it, and then he can say to you that he never said that.
I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing with you.
I'm being facetious.
No, but I'm just saying, I believe what you're telling me. I haven't gone back to look at the tape, I don't plan on going back, I'm taking you at your word because you've said it, other people have said it, okay? I believe even the Z B A members have said it, okay? So, I'm not questioning whether you heard it or not, I'm just saying, I asked him, and he told me, nobody told him.
And that he didn't say that.
And that he didn't say that. So apparently he didn't remember what he said. And that's all I can say.
Yeah. But anyways, I guess I'm looking for the clarification because I keep getting calls now about the petition and the status of that and the interpretation.
I will ask the special counsel if the board can request in writing from the building inspector what his interpretation of the existing cease and desist is.
Yes, regarding, especially violation three, which was a substantial expansion. Because there's two pieces of cease and desist.
Well, the second one was thrown out by the ZBA anyway, so.
Well, no, that was the land removal. The first one was, violation one was the lower shooting shed, and the third one is the.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. I understand that, but like I said, is with the ZBA throwing out number two about earth removal, not getting the permits, albeit what his interpretation of item one and three is in writing if the attorney says we can do so.
And is the attorney aware also of the 2010 condition piece? I'm just asking, something else you may just want to know.
The attorney was given any and all documents related to the initial planning board decision that is on record with the registry of deeds. Okay? And any additional information after that? Because we brought in special counsel way back when the cease and desist.
And I know you're sending out my complaint information to them as well. So what he's doing with it, I don't know. Okay, well, I will move on. Sorry, I know I'm on my two missed words. Thank you.
But thank you.
Well, thank you for your time. Rich, you want to come on up?
Yep.
You only have a half a minute.
The next three, 15 meetings.
Hi. Rich Damaraki, Bachelor Street. I don't know if it's proper, but since I have the microphone, I want to say I agree with Glenn about the water project. A lot of things have changed. We don't even know if we get water past Amherst Street. A lot of people at that meeting were under the impression that the project was going all the way down 202 and some people spoke to that issue and that's what they said. And it was very confusing. So anyways, I had two quick concerns that I just wanted to address. One of them was citizen participation. I've noticed over the last four or five months, citizen participation has been taken off the agenda completely. And I talked to Chris about it and I thought he was receptive to some of my comments. And then what I noticed on your agenda last meeting, it wasn't, it was put at the end of your agenda. Now, and then tonight, it was put at the end of your agenda. Now, I can't see why a resident who wants to speak for five minutes should sit out here for two, two and a half hours for however long your meeting is so that he could speak for five minutes. Now, I think why, I don't know why that happened, but I'm very disappointed and I'm concerned that we've had citizen participation, I would say, for at least 10 years. And it goes way back to when one select person, select board member, agreed with some of the residents that we should have citizen participation. And I keep hearing time and time again that you want people to be involved in town government. You want them to speak out, you want them to be active. And in my opinion, by not showing, having citizen participation at the beginning of the agenda, it doesn't have to be every meeting. I realize there are some meetings that you just don't have the time. But as a general rule, I think it's very important to, because I could see things changing slowly, that citizen participation is being put on the sideline. But, I mean, I don't know why it was put at the end of these, the last two agendas. I mean, I was shocked to see it. So I just hope that changes. And I hope you all realize that to have people come here to speak to you, to tell you how they feel is very important. So I hope it continues the way it has been for the last several years. The other point I wanted to mention is the town attorney or any attorney that this board consults with. The town attorney is supposed to give you his opinion on certain issues. I've heard time and time again from people on the board where they would say, the town attorney told us we had to do it this way. We had to vote this way. The town attorney is supposed to give you his opinion. He's supposed to tell you what your options are. You're supposed to make the decision, not the town attorney. There are some laws that it's clear cut, you have to do it a certain way. Now, I mentioned to Chris that I thought it was very important that when the town attorney makes a decision, you should all get it in writing. You should, you're all very intelligent people. You should have it in front of you to read it, to see if you agree with it. Lots of times, there's more than one option. So that's why, you know, it's, I think it's your responsibility to make the decision. Because lots of times, the attorney will talk to Chris. Chris is, you know, sometimes a filter. So the opinion or decision that the attorney has goes to Chris. And then it goes from Chris to you. And lots of times, you have no backup. And I'll give you a quick example.
Rich, I can't speak for the board. I'm just, I'm speaking for myself. But I know when the town council were asking questions, he's providing information. I know that's his opinion. And I know it's what his opinion feels what is the best for the town to take. And we do get different options. When I speak, I can tell you, I speak based on the information that the town council has provided, but it's my decision as to which way I take that information.
Is it in writing though to you?
I have, we've had, getting emails on particular items where this is an option, this is an option, this is an option. And I've looked at them and I act on what I feel is best for the town.
Okay.
Based on the information that's provided to me.
Does that hold true for everybody else?
I've never had an email from the attorney, so I can't speak one way or the other. I think you're probably talking most in the pleading board, Glenn? The attorney for the plea?
No, there's been time, maybe before you were on the.
Yeah, before we were on, I haven't seen.
Or just information that's provided to us with anything and not just, just going back to what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I can speak for myself and that's all because I've been on the board here the longest. Where information, I do my way off the pros and cons, any information. And I act on what I feel is best for the town.
Okay, so Jay, you have not seen anything in writing, any lawyer's opinions on important issues?
All I'll say is, under the current laws that we have, I've seen the attorney's argument and I will formulate my own opinion upon his argument.
Jennifer, have you seen anything in writing?
I've only seen what Jay has seen. We have not had contact with the attorney, especially in this issue.
Can I give you one quick example of what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
And again, I don't, I'm referring to the gun club issue, but I don't expect you, I'm not asking any questions of you. At one meeting, Chris mentioned that, it was brought up about the 1,000-yard range, the use of the range. And Chris mentioned that if they started shooting from 980 yards forward, the town would need a new cease and desist order. If they went 30 yards closer to the target, the town would need another cease and desist order. That makes no sense whatsoever, common sense or legal sense. Now, that's a perfect example where I would ask the attorney, show me in the Mass General Law, federal law, or a court case where you came up with that answer. That makes no sense whatsoever. So again, if you have it in writing before you, now, was it a court case? Was it a Mass General Law? Makes no sense. I don't know. Do you know where that came from, Chris?
I'm not going to answer that to you, Rich, because I'm not going to have you going around being an attorney.
I'm not an attorney.
I'm saying is you're going to question his opinion that he has gone to school for, got all the stuff for, and will be the one responsible for answering in court why his opinion what it is. That's my problem with, if we bring everything out here, once we put a piece of document on this table, it becomes public knowledge. And then everybody can take it and they can take their opinion and they can say what they want to say. I'm relying on the expertise of someone who is a lawyer in municipal law to advise us correctly. Because if he screws up, I expect him to go to court and tell the judge why he came up what he came up with.
Okay, I expect this board to review the options and make the decision.
And you have that right to expect that, Rich. But you know something? This board does not have to take that as a directive from you. And I'm just letting you know that.
I can say they did, Chris.
But all I'm saying.
Don't get angry.
No, I'm not getting angry. What I'm getting upset about is the fact is, everybody wants to question everything decision this board makes. This board makes their decisions based on the best information available.
Now, you're misleading what I'm saying, Chris.
I am not misleading anybody, Rich.
I said they should have the options.
You and I will disagree, agree to disagree, okay?
Yeah, you don't have to argue.
Anyway, this is just about, we started off talking about citizen participation.
Right.
And we're going the wrong way.
But all I'm saying, Glenn, is it then goes into, now we have to question how our legal counsel comes to their decisions. Okay? And I'm sorry, we rely on their expertise for that.
And I agree 100% with you in reference to what you're saying. I take it as you're just making a recommendation to us as elected officials. Whether we agree or disagree with you isn't the point.
Right.
And I understand that. I mean.
Okay, that's all I wanted to bring up.
I don't want to.
I agree with Glenn. Just like you heard us discussing about the water project, we will get our own opinions out. We will make our own decisions. Yes, we will use every fact, every piece of data, every bit of information that we have available to give the best decision we can for this town. It's not a personal decision, it's a decision for the town. Because I, when I sit here, I don't make decisions. Making decisions for myself is easy. Making decisions for other people is hard.
Right.
So I have to look at it from a town's point of view and that's how I make my, just like I made the decision tonight. Do I like it? No. But I think it's the only prudent thing we can do at this time. Because we still have to 2023 to find out what's going on for a lousy quarter mile. I mean, that's where I'm at. I'm getting perturbed over that because what can we do? They got us over a barrel. We got less than 20.
We got 220 days after whatever the due date is for the bids.
That is correct. But I'm just saying for the entire project will be.
We already went down that avenue before.
Not 220 days.
From September 14th. It's 220 days from the receipt of bids.
Right.
I'd like to address your comment on public comment. We really do want public comment. And I'm not being flipped, but people are not lining up to talk to us. I wish they would, to be honest. I wish they would. And I can honestly say that if I were seeing an influx of people that came in and wanted to hear their voices heard, I would push to have it the first thing on the agenda. And I would make sure that that does happen because we can't do our jobs if we're not hearing from the people. And we're not. We're hearing the Facebooks. I get it. We're hearing what goes on on Facebook. We see it. I'm on it all the time. But that does us no good. So if you'd like to start rallying people to come and visit us.
Well, they're not going to come when you have that meeting.
Well, I can say this from now on and I'll just ask Kathy to put it. If somebody is on the agenda with a specific time, they're going to get that time. After the people on the agenda are given, we'll do citizen participation before we do anything else. Is that fair enough?
So you're saying you're going to keep it at the end of the meeting?
Nope. I says, if somebody has an appointment with us.
Yeah.
They get priority because they're given an exact time. At the end of the appointments, we'll do citizens' participation before we do any more of our business.
Okay, that's fair.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's good.
Because we would.
Which I agree. I mean, this meeting, as Chris said, could probably want to nine thirty, maybe longer now. And I agree, it's not fair to people. You want to come in, you want to.
But if somebody has an appointment at a specific time.
Voice of thoughts, concerns, yes.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Okay, Chris, you want to pick your next subject?
We have to address them.
I have to write the state my.
Yeah.
State my opinion.
I meant the last thing we brought up, didn't we?
Well, we got more things that I'm sure everybody's going to have issues with, so what the heck. It's part of the job.
Sign up for it.
All right. Next item. The reason why I wasn't at the meeting last week. Yeah, last week. Mr. Joyce had received the invitation to go to the rollout of the Resilient Massachusetts Action Team, R-MAT. That was down in Boston. It started at 2:00 PM. Basically, what it is, is Resilient Mass is a program that has been developed by the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs to basically deal with climatic changes that we've been going through and how to address it. As part of it, this is what the MVP program really is addressing, the vulnerabilities of every municipality to deal with climatic changes. According to what they reported there, there was 249 communities that conducted MVP studies for each of their communities.
249 out of 350.
We were one of them?
We were one of them. They have looked at, 141 of them, and have incorporated them into a statewide resiliency plan. Okay? They have also have had climatologists who they hired to look at the climate for every community in the town, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and develop a baseline of climatic issues in each community. They have met with FEMA and gone through this with FEMA. Massachusetts is at the head of the curve on this. Okay? There aren't very many other states that have these resilient plans. And if they do, they're one of those that sit on the shelf and nobody really implements them ever. So with us being, I'm not going to say us, with the Commonwealth being proactive in this area, FEMA is keeping an eye on what is being developed and is using it as a model to send out to other communities. As part of that, FEMA has also started talking about making a commitment to having more people assigned to Massachusetts to make sure that this program is a success. It was interesting to hear that the base model of this resiliency program was used during the Boston Marathon bombing. And that's why they were able to react so quickly and so effectively that incident. As I said, this is a work in process document. They do have a site called resilientma.org that you can go out and follow as they continue to add various communities, studies that they did, and working with this project. I believe they're talking about putting, don't know how many, it was like $6.4 billion to the program to try and help assist communities in addressing there. Massachusetts, that's the Massachusetts. But FEMA is also talking about maybe stepping up to the table because they said, over the last three years, they've spent $80 billion more in disaster recovery than they did in the prior 35 years. A lot of money. And it's not just the coastline, it's everywhere else. So I'm sure at some point in time, we'll be doing more with MVP. I know Jay keeps talking about the IFRS and using that to help with the getting the water in to address the rising water tables that are affecting the wells in the town of Granby. Will you give me a chance to talk?
I just know most of the subject, so.
And the issues regarding water runoff along 202. When they put this new work in on 202, they're talking about putting curbs in all along 202. Where's the water going to run off on that? It's just going to become a stream as it comes down. And they, I don't think they've really addressed the amount of water that's going to be coming off that street and how to properly address it. That's going to be an issue for us. Okay? We all know. We have, you look at the storms that have been coming through. How many times have we had tornadoes in Western Mass? All of a sudden, it seems like you got a tornado being talked about, about 100. All of a sudden, it seems like you got a tornado being talked about about once or twice a year now, you know?
You're right, you're right, Chris, when you talk about water runoff.
When you have curbs on both sides, the water has nowhere to run off.
Yeah, everybody's driveway.
You know, and that's a concern. You know, I don't think the state is really properly planning out the work on 202. Oh, I'll put storm drains in. Well, where are the storm drains going?
It's going to go.
That's right.
You know, it's that type of a scenario. And I believe that water runoff from a roadway is contaminated waste because of the oil and exhaust and all that that come off cars.
polluted water.
Okay? And we're just going to collect it and throw it out into the streams and the swamps and whatever, just through a catch basin? I think there's a little bit of a problem there, but.
I agree.
So, but it sounds like it's a good program, sounds like they've got a big backing for it from the governor, lieutenant governor, executive office, the public safety and homeland security, the executive office of environmental affairs, you name it, DEP, EPA, all the other acronyms you can think of are behind this. So, it sounds like it could potentially be a good program.
And if we follow what the administrative wants to do and where they're putting the money to our benefit, like we're trying to do with the water project and all that, that's where we're going to get the biggest bang for our buck. If we start trying to request things that they aren't pushing, we're not going to see it.
Yeah, but we can't request.
But you can't request.
We can't request what the governor wants us to address when we have other issues that they're not addressing. We have issues with trees here, we have issues with, you know, the dead trees over power lines, that you're not getting money. You know, everybody's saying, you take down a tree, you got to put a tree up. Well, where are you going to put the tree?
And where are you going to get the money to buy the tree?
You know, and a lot of the trees that we're addressing are already dead. You drive down some of these streets, how many dead trees are out there that you don't see any leaves on? Those are just accidents waiting to take out our power.
Yep.
You know, but those are things that we need to address that I don't think you're going to see coming from the state. Or the power companies or any of the other things taking on that.
Correct, facts.
So.
And one-third of the town's been surveyed and they got 100 trees that need to come down. And this is.
If you go the other two-thirds, you probably can go right along with it.
Right, but this is the perfect time, if the residents are watching, to drive down the streets where the trees still have leaves on them. Because when you get into the fall, when they lose their leaves, how do you going to know what's a live tree and what's a dead tree? That's why you need to see what the dead trees are now and mark them so you know which ones to take out.
I tried to get a feel from him of how many trees we're dealing with. He's identified at least 300 trees that need to come down. At anywhere from $1,000 to $1,500 a piece to take down.
Yep.
Okay. So, to me, that's a high priority item for us in the next budget year to start addressing that issue.
Before they cause more damage.
Yep. It is the town's responsibility, been explained to me, depends on the road if the town is from the center line out 15 feet or the center line out 25 feet. Depends on the road. And you've got going to the easements and stuff, Hampshire County deeds, the town's responsible for that.
I was about the 15, I wasn't aware that it could go out to 25.
I think that's on the more major roads.
With that said, Chris, you're right, we need to have a plan to continue that down the road, because as the years goes on, that number is going to increase. And we need to start working on that, and it's going to cost money, we know that, but it's, the reasons why we need to do it are, I think, are clear.
Yeah, and one of the important things that we can't let go by that Chris mentioned, the climatologists from the state has measured us, they're measuring our greenhouse gas emissions. Are we reducing them? Are we increasing them? Are we staying neutral? If we keep cutting down trees without replanting them, we're going to be in trouble with the state.
Well, that's your opinion, I won't say that.
Because unless they're willing to belly up to the bar, for lack of a better word, don't tell me how to address my issue and my.
We just got electric car last year, that must help us out somehow.
That's what?
It must help us out somehow, we got electric car.
Yes, and we are.
And the future might get some cruisers electric too, right?
Next year.
We'll see.
We're working in the rough things estimate, if I would do a rough estimate for the energy committee, at the end of the fiscal year, I'm going to say we're about 14% reduction of energy from our original baseline. That's a rough estimate right now.
Ready to move on?
Yeah.
Yep.
Next one has to do with the robocall we've nature went out over the course of the weekend.
Which one?
Well, it was the Board of Health regarding Triple E and actually West Nile virus.
Yep.
There was a confirmed horse from Granby that was diagnosed with Triple E. And basically, our exposure level went from high to critical. They are recommending that any and all activities between dusk and dawn be canceled due to the potential of risk. We saw it all on Channel 22, we saw it all, you know, any other news station you watch that basically if people come down with Triple E, it has lifetime effects.
I think the school took necessary actions for what I've heard, I think the GAA did the same as far as their sporting events as well.
You know, the other question that we may want to start looking at, again, just like the trees, is maybe spraying Dufrane Park for mosquitoes. I did that before the Charter Day, and everybody noticed that there was a quite a reduction in the number of mosquitoes.
Chris, I think that's a good idea, and one of the reasons I'd say it too, because mosquitoes, as far as standing water, I think after the rainstorm, I think Dufrane Park has a lot of standing water.
Puddles.
You see a lot in the front, that's just some area, but throughout it, there's a lot of standing puddles and ponds that take, well, I'll say ponds, or puddles, that take some time to dry up. I think that's the breeding area for mosquitoes. I think, just what you said, I think that's one way to protect our citizens. I think that's money well spent for the people that want to go there and enjoy the park.
I would look at that and maybe then include Brown Ellison at the same time.
I think that's true.
They're two major areas where people congregate. And probably put that in part of my budget process for the next fiscal year, just so you know, that I'm still looking at, those are the type of things I'm looking at and trying to improve upon.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, when you see certain line items going up, you'll have a reason why in advance.
I forget where I put it, but I got contacted by the Board of Health today, and since we have GCAM here and they do not, they wanted us to let them, the people know that they are meeting today, the Board of Health. And there's a Pioneer Valley mosquito controlled district. And I, can I try and, do you know about it yourself?
Yeah.
Okay, then you can explain it, because they were explaining it to me. It's like, you said.
Basically, what it is, you can sign up to have a state assessment for someone to come in and drive up and down our streets with those big trucks blowing the pesticides onto all the trees. And it'll cost you X number of dollars a month to be, join the district. At this point in time, I don't think it's money well spent. I think we should be able to just be able to address the areas that we control. I believe years ago, the Board of Health had what was called the Dunk Program, you could buy, get dunks through the Board of Health where you would throw in your ponds and standing water to control the mosquito population. I think that in conjunction with us taking care of our big park areas is more than enough. We can't be going up and down every street spraying insecticides to try, because we have all well water. A lot of communities that belong to these mosquito districts, quote unquote, have city water.
Right.
And they have city sewer and the whole nine areas. And I can't see taking the chance of contaminating people's wells just to control mosquitoes. I'm sorry.
I agree.
Or their gardens, I 100% agree.
But this is, the purview is the Board of Health.
Yeah, the purview is the Board of Health, but they can't tell the town that they have to join a district.
No, they don't. They have to go to annual town meeting and request it.
Yes. And I'm sorry, but.
Don't be sorry.
It's nice to try and take every precaution possible, but I'm sorry, you live in the country, expect it. I'm sorry, we don't live in the city.
And there are ways that people can protect themselves.
Yeah, just like you said, get rid of all standing water.
Not ponds with fish.
Yeah, you know?
Yeah, they love mosquitoes.
They love mosquito larva, but anything that stands for more than four days is breeding around.
You know, it's the way it is, you know? I think Walt Disney World, I think they use a lot of natural ways of controlling mosquitoes here. You know, they keep water moving, they make sure there's no lily ponds, lilies on the ponds or any of that nature, because that's where the mosquitoes go. You know, they find animals or insects that eat mosquito larva, you know?
I guess, honestly, I've been to Disney World several times, and I don't think I ever got bit by a mosquito there. And I'm not talking about the parks, I'm talking about just the resorts, so it goes what you say, that we take necessary precautions.
I read an article on that. He, Walt Disney hired a gentleman who was from the Air Force who had developed a insect control program, because he was out in the jungles and stuff, and he had to protect his people, and he developed this program, and Walt Disney hired him to do that. And a lot of it is all just plain natural.
Yep. So everything from plants to, as Jen says, fish.
Yep.
They have plants that will eat mosquitoes and others too.
And also ones that repel them.
Yes, there's certain kind of repellents that keeps them away.
Next.
Oh, you've got a pretty big soapbox tonight, because I got a lot of stuff on the list that I think you got to talk about.
Well, do you want to start hitting the?
I need to go home, go to bed soon. Get up in the morning, go to work.
Well, I'm just saying, do you want me to start going through some of the agenda items? Those are things that weren't even on the agenda.
You know, in respect to time, I would recommend that we go over the things that need to go over and that need to be done tonight, and things to be pushed off the next meeting, I recommend we do that.
Yeah, well, I think, like, the marijuana fees you wanted to get.
That's down proposed fee schedule.
Proposed fee schedule.
Number eight.
Okay.
Waste management is number three, so on and so forth. All right, Dufrane Park rentals. I'm sorry, Dufrane Park and Brown Ellison. We have the Belcher Town Little League coming into Brown Ellison August 31st, September 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th, October 6th, and October 20th. Actual number of people is 50, no liquor, and basically must be Little League games that they're holding out there. Baseball practice and scrimmages. At Brown Ellison? Yeah, there's a baseball field out in the back.
I know of that.
And we're keeping it well. I don't know if you've noticed how well our new landscapers and that are keeping our parks.
The parks have looked really nice.
And I do have to say, we did make a good move in hiring the additional staffing to be able to take care of our parks.
People are complimenting them.
Yeah, a lot of positive comments about the parks, also about the doggy park. Improvements that were made there.
More to come.
Yep.
And it's definitely being noticed. We dealt with what was being noticed before, which was some of the bad things, and then a lot of people really recognizing now the good things are being recognized as well, and people are speaking up in regards to that too, which is nicely here.
Yeah, it is good to hear compliments every now and then on things that are going on. For Dufrane, we have the athletic department of the Granby Public Schools, high school cross-country meets on September 10th from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM, maximum number of people 100, no liquor authorized. Then we have Benjamin C. White Post Number 3104 VFW coming in for a post barbecue on September 14th, arriving 8:00 AM and departing 5:00 PM, maximum number of people 299, liquor authorized, no.
Can I ask you one question?
Yep.
They have 199, so they don't have to have any police detail?
Yep.
Okay.
And we can't argue with them.
No, I'm just asking a question.
Yep.
That's all.
We have McDuffie Middle School doing a school outing on Thursday, September 26th from 8:30 AM to 2:00 PM, maximum number of people is 45, no liquor authorized. Then we have Greyhound Options doing an Oktoberfest, okay? On Sunday, October 20th, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, no liquor, and identifying how many people either. Then we have on September 21st, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, we have a work picnic by Sue Sullivan. I don't know who the, but it's a staff picnic, so I don't know what company it's for. Then we have on September 28th, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM, we have a birthday party, maximum number of people 25, liquor authorized is no. And those are all the Dufrane and Brown Ellison Park rentals. Everybody see their departmental reports?
Yes.
Did you see them all, Glenn?
No, I want to see the one.
They must be in front of you, because I don't.
It was, it would be in there, because I got an email to me today, so I think Kathy, no, Kathy would have done it already, because I did read it through the email.
Are you all set on your department?
I'm all set, yes.
You going to do a motion to approve?
I know, Jen was reading something, I don't want to.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we accept the departmental reports.
I'll second your motion, Glenn.
Okay, wait first and second. Any more discussion on the department reports?
I have a request on the departmental reports, actually.
Go right ahead.
Can we standardize whether we're getting them weekly or biweekly? Only so that I can keep track? We get most of them weekly, we get one or two biweekly?
I think they kind of line them up to the select board meetings, depending on when they're coming or going out. As long as we have them for each select board meeting, I think that, I don't care whether they do them myself once a week or once every two weeks, as long as they get them here when we're meeting, is the way I look at it.
Yes.
I don't see if we want to standardize it.
I'm just, yeah, I just have trouble keeping track of which ones I'm supposed to have, to be honest.
Probably easier, I mean.
What do you want?
Either biweekly or weekly, I don't care which, I would just like them all the same. So what would your gentlemen prefer to have?
Prefer weekly, just because I think we get an update on a weekly basis versus waiting two weeks to find out something occurred.
Thank you, that was what I wanted, but I wasn't.
And I agree with Glenn, because if somebody's on vacation, they could be in the middle of a reporting period if we make it biweekly.
Okay.
So.
You have luck, Jen, the gentleman agreed with you.
Did we enter an alternative universe?
No, we're just using common sense, that's all. Do you want that as a directive, or you wanted a vote on that, Mr. Martin?
No, it's your request.
Okay. And we've just made a directive, Mr. Martin, to have all the department heads submit their reports weekly.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem. I generally read them each week anyways.
We still need to continue the vote for the.
Yeah, I seconded it, he's gotta call for it now.
Okay, yep. Okay, since there's no more discussion?
I'm good with no.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Ayes unanimous, pass department reports.
Next you have your various maintenance warrants. First one I have is warrant number 80 for fiscal year 19, a model 20,0094229. That is the last warrant for fiscal year 2019. Basically, it's a bill-paying warrant. Then, next one I have is, and it's not on your agenda, is warrant number nine. That is a payroll warrant.
The one that was done today?
No. No, this was done in beginning of August. You didn't get a copy of number nine?
No.
Uh-uh.
I didn't get a copy of number nine.
Well, we'll have to address that with the staff. The amount, the amount of the warrant is 405,0054881. That is a payroll warrant. Then we have warrant number 10, which is the payroll maintenance warrant in the amount of 183,039.28. Then we have an accounts payable warrant, number 11. In the amount of 943,148.95. That's a bill payment warrant.
I had to do that math quickly in my head.
That's what I was doing in my head too. Then we have a, another warrant number 12, which is a payroll warrant. In the amount of Then we have a payroll maintenance warrant, number 13. In the amount of 325,869.78. And then the final one is warrant number 14, which is a bill payment, a bill-paying warrant in the amount of 61,894.6.
Okay, so.
19-80 and then 20, you guys, 9.
10, 11, 12, 13, 14.
14.
Correct. So I will make a motion that we approve and sign the warrants for fiscal year 19, number 80, and fiscal year 20, number 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14.
I'll second Jen's motion.
Any more discussion on the warrants? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes are unanimous. Yeah, signature time. Why don't you just keep them all down there, Glenn, and you get them, and we'll give one pile back to Chris at the same time.
Requesting a stamp.
I don't think they make stamps for purple.
I'm using pink today. My purple died. I need to become left-handed.
Why is that?
Well, then it wouldn't be an awkward crossover while I'm trying to sign.
I'd put you on the other side.
Good. But then we would inconvenience Glenn, who's right-handed.
Chris, he's a man after an order, because.
No.
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 I was gonna say, I'm trying to keep them straight.
Just as, just as, just as long as they're all there signed, that's all I care about.
Just try to keep them all, that's all. Go ahead, Jen.
You wanna hand those down, please?
There you go.
Glenn's still.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's all right, we'll just.
Chris made me do it.
That's okay. There you go, use a handful.
Thank you.
Okay, we're all through with the warrants. Um, I've already read this, has everybody else already read this?
I'm just going over it now.
Okay.
Well, the next item on the agenda is, I was conducted by Roy Boyer, who is our public sector representative for waste management. And as the board may or may not know, our current curbside collection contract ends June 30th, 2020. Mr. Boyer, in an attempt to avoid having to go through a bidding process again, like we've done every three years, is proposing to the board of selectmen a five-year extension of the existing contract with a not-to-exceed increase of 2% per year for the, up through 20, June 30th to 2025. Now, the reason I'm bringing this in front of the board is I know a few months back, it was talked about whether we wanted to continue with the curbside collection, whether we wanted to expand the curbside collection, whether we wanted to do status quo. Because I know there are some board members who are concerned on the way we fund the program and how some taxpayers are against the way it's funded. The question is, is does the board wish to continue with the program? And number two, does the board wish to enter into discussions with waste management for a contract extension?
Well, we all know that I'm not in favor of the way that it's currently funded.
I'm not either.
Okay, but, here's the big but. We've been told that the cost of removal of the trash was gonna go up three to four times the amount. If they're only talking 2% versus three to four times, or 300 to 400% more. The only thing that I'd like to add to this would be two bulky waste days, they would supply the containers per year, and then our hazardous waste day, which is in our current contract.
Why do we need two bulky waste days?
Because I, I think we should do it twice a year, not just once a year. For the amount that I've seen up, they come in and fills it up. I did it last year, I had to use all Dave's trucks, everything else. We filled up all the conexus, couldn't get any more conexus, so I had them up who all the dump trucks. We filled all the dump trucks up, all bulky waste.
Maybe people should stop being hoarders.
Well, they do have other ways of getting rid of that material. And maybe it's because our fee structure is so low, that that's why they're hoarding it and waiting for our bulky waste days. So maybe we need to address the fee schedule.
Yes, I agree, I definitely agree, we need to address our fee schedule to be competitive with other municipalities, because we are lower than them.
Okay, I think that's part of the problem that we're running into.
Because they're waiting for the lowest price.
Yep.
You are right.
Common sense.
Yes.
I'm not opposed to extending the waste management contract. I'm opposed to how we're collecting the fees from town residents. And I know that it's been said that it's what's fair, the most, the most equitable, I will say. It's not, and many people are upset by it. My household personally has private pickup as well as, so we've chosen to pay for and keep that service, but there are some families that can't afford it and basing their portion on the value of their house is not accurate, and it's not correct, and it's not fair. It's not equitable.
If I was on the solid waste committee, I'm gonna say it was 2013, and I did a study on this. Using the average median house and the minimum and maximum, went to the assessors office and got all the data. For the same amount of trash pickup, there was a, one resident in Granby paying $50 per year. Another resident in Granby was paying over $8,000 per year.
Because of their house?
Because of the value. Because the, the one that's $50 a year was a mobile home that sits on New Leather Road, that is not valued at anything, and that's.
Paying $8,000 per year?
No, $1,000.
Oh, wow.
$1,000.
I thought you said $8,000.
Over $1,000. It was a thousand and change, but the lowest guy was $50.
Okay, no, I just thought you said $8,000, that's all.
No, no.
Equitable would be basing it off of what you're actually throwing away.
Yeah, but then you're gonna, I, I agree. Okay, I don't like the way that it's done either based upon the assessed value of your house. But the only issue that I have, do we gonna go to a different fee or let people go on their own? And then we're facing a three to four, 300% to 400% hike in the amount of pounds per trash versus a 2% hike for trash? That's the question. When I first read this, I said, wow, that's gonna be a hard decision, because like you, I was saying, well, it's common sense. Everybody knows I was against it. But if they're talking about three to four hundred percent increase for a private carrier, what are we gonna do? Do we take the best deal for 2% per year, which total were 10% over five years?
No, she's not, she's not talking that part. She's talking a part.
I'm talking about how we fund it.
How are you gonna fund it?
How we fund it. I'm not opposed to this contract.
Tax rate.
She wants a, a, a fee.
I need, I want us to find
A fee.
A more equitable way to fund this.
The only other way they can do it is, you know, for a fee, a set fee. But then.
Could we, could we institute a buying the bag system?
We have a pay issue, but the problem is, is under our program, you get the first 30 gallon.
Correct.
Free.
Correct.
But anything over and above that has.
Based on the value of your house.
But I'm just saying, you get the first 30, 30 gallon barrel free. Anything after that is supposed to be going into
Blue bag.
The town of Granby, blue bags.
Correct. Could, I guess, I guess my question is, could we change the funding where instead of getting that first 30 gallon barrel free, you buy your bags?
And those bag fees is gonna go up more than two bucks a bag or $1 a bag?
Yes, it will, but let's just.
You'll see more trash being dumped on the side of the road.
I'm gonna pick on you, I don't think you will.
I think you will.
I'm gonna pick on you, Jay, okay?
Go ahead.
Your house is worth, I don't know, 180, 180,000, okay?
375.
My house is worth 500,000. I, I recycle, I reuse, I compost, I do all of that. I throw away one bag of trash for a family of four. Yet I'm paying how much more than you?
I, 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 I agree. I agree, I'm not in favor of that either, but.
I'm not either. Other municipalities are doing it, and I'm not seeing a greater increase in what's being dumped on the side of the roads and things like that. It's a common, people pay for what they are using. Maybe it will cause more people to become more environmentally friendly, I don't know. I just know that basing what people are paying for trash pickup on the value of their house. Now, if we could find a way to base it on the value of tonnage of what they throw out, I'm all for that, but we can't get scales.
The bag system, what you're talking about.
Right. Find me an equitable way.
What do you think, Glenn?
Well, I know when this was all talked about years ago, several different options were, was explored. And they were trying to figure out at that time, what was the best way to do it. And they presented that to the town, the town voted on it. With that said, I do agree. I think it's unfair for someone who pays $50 to remove trash, someone else pays $1,000 a year, a year to move trash. But, so, in reality, is that, to say that that wasn't a added-on tax or, or, or fee to your taxes by a percentage, and you never knew it, like a, like a, a lot of, a lot of cities have, a lot of towns have, it's just built into your, your property taxes, because that's the way it's always been. And they, and that, and that same system is the whole true anywhere you go, where it's built into their taxes, just like ours are. It's, it, there's not a number that's attached to it, like we attach to it, but it's a service that the city or town provides. And reality is, it's kinda the same thing where someone's house is worth 100,000, and someone else's house is worth 500,000. They're paying a lot more taxes for a $500,000 house, not just for trash, but for fire, for police, for plowing the roads, it holds true across the board. So what do you, what do you kinda pick and choose? Like I said, I agree, because I think, you know, to some point, it is unfair, but when you lump all the services together, you're paying for the services of the town or services of the city. I guess that's how you gotta look at it, because.
And, and I do, I'm, I do agree with you on that. I think how it was originally presented to the town is what's causing a lot of these problems. When we, and it is in the, you know, spirit of transparency, and I understand that. Do we or could we have the option of approaching waste management to contract with opening a transfer station? Why?
Because we don't have one.
Waste management has one.
The problem becomes, is where do you bring it?
Right.
That's one of the biggest things that we, we are always gonna be having an issue with. Where do you bring it?
Right, we will have that no matter what, but if we're utilizing waste management, whether we open a transfer station somewhere in town, they're gonna pick that trash up and. we open a transfer station somewhere in town, they're gonna pick that trash up and bring it to the same spot that they would, whether they picked it up at our curbside. Does that make sense?
But the problem we ran into in running our own transfer station was the abuse.
Not asking us to run it, asking Waste Management to open and run it.
They ran our wires at one point, Walter.
Yes, okay.
He let, you give him a six-pack of beer, and he'd let you bring anything in.
Wish I'd known.
No, it was, it was a well-known fact.
I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
Okay, so there was a lot of abuse. So, when we took it over and hired our own landfill monitors, they received a lot of abuse from residents, and trying to put things in there illegally. Someone owned a home improvement business, they come in with stuff from Chickapi, Ludlow, where they did their work, and want to dump it for free in our transfer station.
So not bagged, you're talking loose materials?
Yes.
Okay.
They bring a sink-in, they're gonna put it in with the, with the white goods, free of charge. That's the problem we ran into, is that while 98% of the residents abide by the rules, you have the other 2% that are constantly trying to...
Abuse it.
Abuse it, and get away with something for free, knowing very well that for these home improvement companies, they're charging those homeowners for disposal fee, and then they come and bring it here and get away with it for free. Problems, big problems. I, I'm sorry, but...
And I get that, I just...
You know, and then we gotta go back to that sticker system, and we gotta make sure that the sticker is correct, and you gotta match the sticker to the license plate, and then you gotta make sure that the vehicle is actually housed in Granby, and this, and that, and then you got the guy, he has the business, well, I, I garage it in Granby, but my business is out of Chickapi, and this and that, and I, I think I should still be able to get it, because I pay my property taxes here, and just be...
Then you're gonna have the other one, like we do on bulky waste day, excuse me, yard waste day, well, an elderly Granby resident, which is 24.4% of our residents, okay, have their siblings that live in another town bring their stuff on over. The way we police that is say, I wanna see a telephone bill, or something showing that your mother's name's on it, with a Granby residence, when somebody comes up with their license and it says Chickapi on it. You have that thing you gotta deal with as well.
Well, I guess at that point, you're just taking it on faith, because I can show you any random bill.
You're right.
Yeah.
So you're taking it on people are going to be honest, and again, you said, you know, 98% of them are going to be honest.
With a Granby address on it, yes.
What I'm asking for is for us to investigate and find a way. I'm not opposed to the contract at all. I love Waste Management, I love the service they've provided, I love everything about what they've done. I don't see Waste Management trash barrels strewn across the road like I have with some other companies. Their drivers have always been professional and kind to people. What I am asking is for us to find a way to take a contract that we approve, and find a more equitable, equitable way to fund it.
Oh, I, I agree with that. I wish we had some fee system to treat everybody equal.
I'm not asking equal, I'm asking equitable, big difference.
Well, when I meant equal, I meant people who own houses pay for trash, people who own land don't pay for trash.
Correct.
That, that's all, that's what I'm saying.
If the land's not generating, it shouldn't be paid.
That's correct, that, that's all I was trying to say.
Because now they're being double paid, they're paying double.
They're paying on, they're paying through their tax rates.
For two properties. I'm sorry, Glenn, what were you gonna say?
I think we, as a board, I think we could, I think we maybe appoint a committee to review it. I mean, like I said, I know that a lot of, a lot of stuff they're probably gonna look at now was looked at several years ago, but not to say things haven't changed, but I think, I think it's fair to appoint a committee and say, we need to look at it, if there are other options that are better for the town. I think that's, that's reasonable.
But, but everybody has to understand, this fee is a monthly fee, whether there's 300 households they're picking up from, 2,000 household, or one household. It's all gonna be the same. That's the issue you gotta understand, is...
No, and I do understand.
But it's, I'm talking about other options for the entire town, that would have, that would have, and I'm not saying do it, I'm just saying, they can look, we can, we can have someone look at other options. Like I said, I remember, I remember the transfer station being talked about before, some of the same things you just brought up here, Chris, were things that were discussed before. There's the pay by the, the bag of the barrels, and people have to get the barrels, I remember that, and, and I remember the whole discussion that was going through at that particular time, and like I said, they thought this was the best option for the town, that was what was presented, but I think it's, it's, it's reasonable to say, hey, go back and look if there's anything better out there for us, if there's not, at least we say, we looked at it, and tried to see if there's anything better. I mean, I don't know if we should continue into a, a extension of a five-year contract with Waste Management, is there a better contract out there for us? Is that something we should look at? Because now we're just saying, hey, we're gonna lock into five more years with you, where we may have another company saying, no, I want your, I like your business, we can do it for this amount of money.
What do we pay on an average per month?
Now, when you pay them...
It's right there.
22,641 dollars.
That's right, that's right. Sorry. Here's the... Is there any way we can take that 22,641 dollars and 67 cents and divide it by the number of households in Granby?
Of course you can.
That's what I'm just saying.
That would be more equitable. Take that, take our year-end, divide it by the number of households.
And do it as a betterment.
Let me ask you this question.
Yeah.
You have three apartments in your house, versus one apartment, or a single-family household. You have condos.
Each one is its own separate household.
Yeah.
Okay.
If it is a separate calling address, and there's someone residing at it.
You've got, say, this one here with all the apartments, okay? Are we looking at a building, or are we looking at each individual? That, that's the problem you're gonna run into.
That's why I said, let's let the committee look at it. Let them, let them do all the, the research and stuff like that, see what other towns, cities are doing, and stuff like that, and may come back that this is still the best option that we have.
Yeah, are you gonna consider a municipal service or not? Basically, that's, that's what you're gonna look at.
I, I, I think we need to.
So?
We need to, we need to have everybody protecting the town. That's our responsibility, because I don't like the idea of having it privatized for each individual.
No.
That can get costly for the individual, but also then you're, you're hoping that people do what they're supposed to be doing with their trash. And I know hearing from a lot of people, even nowadays, this past summer and stuff, that a lot of people are going around cleaning up and picking up trash and stuff like that, see a lot of it now on, on the roadside, and I hate to see something like that, or something like that contribute to that.
I think we should open a swamp shop, but that's just me. But I will...
Where you gonna put it?
I don't know, my front yard, I don't know.
So, Chris, one is, our contract with Waste Management is up...
June 30th of 2020.
So we have time.
For next year, so we can actually put it out to bid.
Yes, we can.
And I think that would be the, to me, I think that'd be the best thing for us to do, so we get, kind of get a real take on what the market is, we're not just taking what they have, and if there's a, you know, better one out there, then we can look at it, and they're gonna obviously present their bid as well.
And it won't be as good as this, I'll tell you that much right now. I just, I'm just...
It may not, but if they want to keep our business, they may...
I'm just gonna say, it's not gonna be as good.
That's, that's, that's understandable, but I, I guess, we don't know, and like I said, and then we, when we get open to the open market, someone may say, we want your money.
Well, the issue is, is if we are looking at putting it out to bid again, we gotta get it out to bid by the beginning of the year, because it's a good six-month process to go through developing the specs, and getting out, and getting them in, and reviewing the proposals, if there are any proposals.
And, and I would think Waste Management's right in the ballpark of other companies. I don't, they're, I don't, I mean, based on what their last contract was, well, that's what their bid.
We were hot to get us, they, we were the black eye for Waste Management, because we were with Allied Waste.
Right.
And they had had the landfill here for many years, we were their customer, they were out of South Hadley, we were their customer, and then all of a sudden, we went with someone else, and it was a black eye for them.
And why did we go with somebody else?
Price.
Price. So if you want to keep our business, you know...
And Jen is correct, we had trucks that broke down many a times in town, we had trucks that had hoses that would release in town, things of that nature, too.
I also know Waste Management dug up someone's lawn, too, so...
But, I'm just saying, it's just that, you know, it's just...
But those are parts of the contract.
Like Jen says, you get what you pay for.
I'm not, I'm not, for me personally, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else. I am not upset or disillusioned with what contract they're offering us. I think it's a really good contract, and it's a really good price for the services that we're getting from them.
How are we gonna collect the money?
How we're collecting the money is what I'd like to explore. Feasible ways that make us able to make those monthly payments, but making it equitable.
You mentioned when they did sewers, they did a betterment or something like that, and I'm not that...
You can't do betterment, because this isn't an improvement.
I, I didn't know, that's why I'm asking.
I bet it can only be done for something that is physically done to improve your property. It's a betterment to your property.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
Trash is not considered a betterment.
Well, it is when it builds up on the lawn, just saying.
That becomes a border health issue.
Not going there.
How many copies had, Chris? I'm not asking for exact number, but how many households are there?
I wanna say...
1,200?
No, we're doing parcels, we're not doing households.
Or parcels.
Okay, we have about 2,400 parcels. That includes ones without houses on it.
Yeah.
Houses themselves, don't hold me to this, about 1,500 to 1,600. I'd have to go look at the last, the last assessors.
And that's not including multi-units, that's just the base structure?
No, that's including multi-units and everything.
Okay, so that's like, take Stony Brook, that's including each unit?
No, it's one unit. I'm looking at parcels.
So you're looking at the overall building, not what's inside of it?
Right. I'm not looking at...
33 units over here.
The 76 units out at...
What's the number that we can figure to use, so we come up with that figure, how many?
Granby Heights.
Granby Heights. I'm not looking at that as 76 houses.
So you're looking at as one house?
That's one property.
One property. Okay, okay, so we could conceivably spread this out over...
Yeah.
The only reason I picked out 1,200, at our Economic Development Committee, a question was asked, and Bill Porter says there's approximately 1,200 households in Granby, since he's on the Board of Assessors, that's where I got my number from.
About the 1,200, is that splitting out to 76 individual ones for Granby Heights, is that 26 at the condos up here, Pleasantry Condos, is...
My question was, in reference to how we come up with the, the amount that we need to pay.
And I agree, Glenn, but the thing is, is we have to look at how many one-family, two-family, three-family, four-families, so on and so forth down the line.
Probably 13, say 13, 12,000.
That's what I'm saying, about 1,500, when you really start, you may have 20, 1,200 units, but maybe 1,500 actual households, for lack of a better word.
I mean, look, I mean, you know, as long as we feel that their current price for Waste Management, Waste Management is a solid price for us, and kind of going over the increase over the years, I mean, you're talking about, if you, if you take the 1,500, I guess households that were, you're talking about...
Take about a $300,000 bill divided by 1,500 households. Because don't forget...
Just thinking monthly, you know, so you're probably talking, at the end of that five years, at, to 2025, or actually 2024 year, you're roughly talking about $20 more a month per a household.
Don't forget, that doesn't include disposal of the trash, that's just to pick it up. We pay 77.50 a ton to dispose of it.
We pay 77.50?
Mm-hmm. Per ton, to dispose of it.
Okay.
And that's supposed to be going up?
Okay. Can we negotiate that down?
No.
No.
Why?
Because nobody's...
Because everybody, everybody's in the catbird seat on that one. All the landfills are closing, they're not issuing any new permits for trash burners. What everybody is basically doing is putting it on a railcar and shipping it out to Ohio and Pennsylvania.
Jay, you're good at grants.
I don't know, I don't know of any grants for, getting into this.
Are there any grants out there that help fund programs to reduce waste for households?
There are grants for bioenergy or biofuels, but I think it would cost us, as an independent municipality, way too much to separate and process it.
Okay. It was just a thought.
No, I'm just saying, there are bioenergy and biofuels, but they are done on such a large scale, and then you have to separate it and process it for one municipality, I don't think it'd be if I was like, but I just took the 22,600, divided that by 1,500, and I get $15.06, and if I multiply that times 12 for the 12 months, the yearly fee would be $180.80.
Per household?
Yeah.
Okay.
At, at 1,500.
No, that's not for a household, because remember, it's based on the value of your house.
No.
No, no, no.
I'm saying, if we take the number of actual households. Irregardless, okay, we have 1,500 family units.
But, no, I understand what you're saying, but reality is, at, at, at the end, it's gonna cost me more than it costs...
No, not under the way they're doing it. They're gonna take the $22,000 figure.
Yeah.
Say we have 1,500 houses, houses in the town, not value, houses, it's gonna cost you $15 per month to have the trash picked up at your house.
How much does it cost you now, approximately? Sorry, getting personal.
My wife pays the bill, I don't know.
Right now, it's probably close to $300 a year.
Okay, so that's less than, that's more than $15 a month.
Because your house is probably...
Because your house is valued more.
More than the median value of 148.
But then, that's the point I was just making, it's gonna cost some people more.
Oh, yeah, we know it, it's gonna cost some less.
Oh, yes, it will cost some people more.
No, it's, the $180 is gonna be a flat fee for everybody, so you can't say it really costs more.
But, yes, because...
More than what they're paying now.
The issue's gonna be, is if you're, you mentioned before, Jake, 24% of our population is elderly. Can they afford going from 50 bucks a year to 180?
Well, that's, and that's just my concern, that, that right there, you know.
And that's all I'm saying, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying yea or nay against it, I'm just saying, is somebody has, is it gonna go up? Yes. And is it gonna be a group that cannot afford it? It could be a low-income family who's just barely getting it by, you know?
Well, we have it now, with a median household at 248,000 in Granby, if an elderly person lived in a house that was assessed more than that, then they're paying more than they, they should. I mean, anybody, 248,000 was the median house value in Granby.
Okay.
So anybody's house who's assessed higher than 248,000 is paying more. Anybody whose house is assessed less than 248,000 is paying less.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
Right. And there's quite a few that are...
Better more.
But like Mr. Martin...
And there are quite a few that are less.
But Mr. Martin is putting out the point, particularly with the senior citizens.
I'm not even saying just senior, I'm pointing them as an age group.
We have a lot of low-income people too.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, but you know.
It's the truth.
Our per capita is only 73,000 in Granby.
But we want to be fair to everybody.
We do want to be fair to everybody, and I'm sorry, but I can't see penalizing the people that have worked hard to build the value in their house. It's not fair.
No, I agree, Jen, goes back to what you were saying before, as far as that. And I think that's where we just have a committee to go out and look at the options.
I agree. I'd like to see that happen.
Chris, if you feel that waste management, this is a reasonable contract.
We just got to figure out how to pay it.
Well, we're going to have to pay it either way, whether we keep it the situation we are now, which we're not a loss, or.
Any of the board members have people who they think would be interested in serving?
I know a couple people that probably would.
Yeah, I know, I think if we look at some people that you put out there, I think some people that are really concerned with it would want to look at options.
I have no problem. I don't want to be on this one. I was on the last one. No, I have no problem getting information from anybody. But I was just trying to figure a way to pay this $22,600 per month.
Jake, that's just collection.
I know, that's not the amount of trash itself. It's a plus.
We paid it last year, we paid it this year, we paid it the year before.
Well, we also pay for the disposal, the tipping of the trash.
I understand that, but last year's contract wasn't the same as this year's contract.
Yes.
But all I'm saying, we also reduced the amount that we raised from taxes by 30,000.
Right, last year.
Two years, two years ago, okay?
Two years ago, yeah.
So, we're, we're collecting 330,000 on a, probably about a $350,000 yearly expenditure. Okay, that's the problem right now. So, if you're looking at how much is it going to cost per household, you got to look at the total cost of 350 over 1,500 households. Not just the 22.
I understand that, and you got to kind of, it's, and it's based on the value of the house. So everybody's, you know, it just goes back to that whole thing, and I agree, Chris, what you're saying. I just go back to the, the contract with waste management. If this is something that we feel is the, you know, something is a good contract, is what we're seeing with the market is dictating at this particular time, then maybe we should follow through with it and sign.
Well, I, I asked him, I said, okay, where are, where are you bringing your trash? Chickaby just closed. I think Millbury just closed. A lot of the landfills are closing. Where are they bringing their trash? They're putting it on railroad carts and shipping it out of state. Okay, that's what a lot of people are doing. Everybody's shipping it out of, out of state and throwing it in the old coal mines. That's all they're doing.
What do, what do you pay per month for the actual trash disposed on an average? The amount of pounds?
Per month?
Yeah.
How did you know last year's figure?
No, just give me a second.
He's, he's good at this.
I know he is, but I don't want to tax his brain too much. It's already 9:25.
I want to say probably over the course of a year, we probably spend 80,000 to 90,000. We, we collect about 1,000 tons.
So 90,000?
1,000 to 1,200 tons.
A month?
A year.
A year.
And that's a variable rate. That can go up at any time.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we're between 1,000 and 1,200 tons a year.
Have we been tracking that since we?
Of course I have.
No, I'm, but I'm saying, so since Waste Management's contract started, we've been tracking that. So a committee could look at that, get an average, we could find.
And right now, the price per ton is 77.50.
Okay.
To, just to dispose of it.
Just to, right, just to dispose of it, not counting the contract. I like the contract for myself. I think it's a good one. I'm okay with that being approved. I'd like a committee to find a way to pay for it that is equitable. That's what I'd like. You may not agree with me. You may agree with me.
Well, until said time, as a committee can determine an alternative source, are you still comfortable with the taxation portion?
Yes, that's our, that's our.
Yes.
That's our vehicle right now to pay for it. And even if we have an appointed committee and they come up with ways to do it, if it affects the town, the town's got to vote on it and decide what's the proper way to go now for them.
Yes, I'm, I am comfortable with keeping it status quo while we explore ways to make it equitable. And I think the town will understand, and they'll be more patient if they understand that we are looking for a better solution while keeping the same services and the same quality.
But if we lock into a five-year contract with someone, we're in a five-year contract.
This is true.
Bingo.
Oh, I agree. I don't, I don't think we'll get a better contract. I mean, they could say, we want your business for the next five years. But then again, you know, we do a three-year contract, they could say, yeah, we don't really need your business because we don't have anywhere to send your trash. We've been gambling a lot tonight, gentlemen.
If pickup is $181, the disposal of the trash itself, this is on a monthly basis, based upon what Chris has given me, is another $60, so it's $241 a month. If everybody in the, every household, and I'm saying 1,500 households, was billed $241 a month, that would meet Chris's needs, under the current rate of the trash that he's paying.
Who's going to guarantee they're going to pay it?
That's the avenue. We got to figure out how it's done.
Because right now, coming out of your tax bill, you don't pay your tax bill, we take your house.
Right. And you, and if you put it on a fee, what if they decide not to choose to pay the fee?
No, but I'm, but that's our avenue.
But that's, so Chris, going back to what just Jay just said, that is something that was discussed back then. And that's why they said, what happened in that case, so that's why people said, well, that's why we needed to do it this way. So, except a lot, a lot of things that we're talking about were discussed before, but.
We went through.
Yes, in the committee I was on, over and over and over.
And the only thing, like I said, the only thing I say about waste, waste management, is I don't know what the market is right now. I, I can't speak to that. I don't know what it is, so. I don't know if that's a, a good deal, an average deal, or a great deal, or a bad deal. I don't know. I don't know what the, excuse me, I don't know what the market is.
The current contract was going up 3.5%. The current contract.
And this was going up only 2.
Okay. Okay?
Yeah.
Your numbers, and you just presented amazingly, because I have a six-yard can that cost me 240 bucks a month. It costs me $7 a day if you, if you, if you look at it. So your numbers are very accurate.
Well, I'm using the numbers you give me.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to compliment you, that your numbers were very accurate.
Yeah, we're, we're using the pickup fee plus the, what Chris is paying the average per month, and I come up with $241. If all 1,500 households signed up for this, that's the problem, is how are you going to force them to sign up other than taxes? That's the problem. So, if you could get everybody to agree, 1,500, okay, I'll sign up for $241. Everybody would be the same, but you're always going to have somebody that says, nah, I'm not going to sign up for it. I'll let him pay for my trash. You know what I'm?
You know what you're going to also get, Jake? The people who leave town for six months and go to Florida for six months. Well, I'm not using it, so why should I have to pay the fee?
Yeah, and they'll, they'll opt out of the fee and then come back in the fee.
So, I'm just, I'm just saying, it's just, there's a lot of.
I mean, it defeats my entire argument, but they're not necessarily wrong.
No.
Paying for trash they're not using.
So. The only, the only way, on the committee I was on before, that could guarantee the town was going to get money was through taxation. That is the only way. Is it the most equitable way? The answer is no. But how can you get 1,500 households to agree to pay a set amount for 12 months a year?
You don't. You get the town to vote on it, and that's the new system they have in place, but it goes back to.
Right. And like I said, I went through this on the committee the last time.
I remember all the arguments about it.
Can we, can we move forward?
Yep.
It's 9:30. It's 9:30 right now.
I'm hungry.
Should have eaten before you came.
I was at work.
Oh, sorry. We have a common victor's license for Ona McGee of 11 Myrtle Street, Greenfield, Mass. And they are basically a vendor at the Red Fire Farm only. And this will expire on December 31, 2019. Cost is $25. Does the board wish to grant that license?
I'll make a motion that we grant the license to Ona McGee of 11 Myrtle Street, Greenfield, Mass.
What do they sell at Red Fire Farm?
Look on the back. Go down, go down one page.
Yep, it's right here.
Okay.
That was on the second.
Second page.
Did I miss it? I just saw it. Oh, craft goods, clothing. It's only at the Tomato Festival. They're just a regular vendor. But because it's tomato product, is what I'm guessing.
Okay, Glenn is, oh, excuse me, Glenn, Jen has made a motion to accept this. Is, is there a second?
A second, Jen's motion.
Any more discussion on this license? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
While you're signing, can I read the next?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Next one is for an entertainment license for live band and DJ events for the Immaculate Heart of Mary Church, 256 State Street, Granby, Mass. License to expire December 31, 2019. I will also make a recommendation that we waive the fee of $50 for the.
Nonprofit for the church.
For church. Churches we usually waive the fees for all churches in town. Yes, I know, it's supposed to be a separation of church and state. Yes, I do understand that, but.
That wasn't what I was thinking, but it's okay. I'll go with that one instead. Okay, I will make the motion that we approve the license for the Immaculate Heart of Mary Church. I'm sorry, the entertainment license for Immaculate Heart of Mary Church, and that we waive the fee.
A second, Jen's motion.
Any more discussion on this entertainment license? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes are unanimous. That's the only entertainment license here?
Oh, it's going to get wet.
Now it's the big encumbrance in letters.
Okay. All right, the next one is the, an annual event that we usually do. These are for amounts that were basically spent for fiscal year 19 that are incurred for fiscal year 19, but not to be paid till after June 30 of 2019. First one is the general fund. We have $701,477.50 in payroll wages. That is basically for one week, on the town side, one week of June, the last week of June, and to cover the payroll for the school from June through August. Because their contracts start September 1, so that they have to encumber the wages for the summer. We also have expenses of $24,164.77. And total capital expenditures of $1,736, 930.15, for a total of $2,462,572.42 in encumbrances for the general fund. Does the board have any questions?
No, I have them right here online.
Do you have a question, Jay, or?
No, I said, no, I have them on, I'm, I'm online.
Okay. You want to do them all? There's three copies of each one there.
Is that three? Okay.
Yep. You want me to do each one of them?
Do we want to do them all together, gentlemen? Make one motion?
I'm fine with that, Jen.
Let's just do them all.
Okay, the next one is for the school lunch fund. It's $11,203.63 in expenses. That is for the June payment to Chartwells for the school lunch program. Then we have special revenue, $207.60 for wages and salaries. That is for the, last week in June payroll for the Elderly Executive Office of Elderly Affairs grant, to pay the person, their final week of pages, wages in June. Next one we have is the sewer enterprise fund, $150 for wages and $4,000 in expenses. $150 is, again, to pay for the final week of June for wages, and the $4,000 is to cover a contract for the Title V work that they are still trying to catch up on for the community septic systems. The next one is for the ambulance enterprise fund. It's $10,890.99 for wages, $2,000 for expenses. Again, it's for the final week of June. The expense, expenditure portion is for the educational incentive pays, we have to pay the employees. And then the $10,000 is their regular wages. Then for the capital project fund, I have $4,572,929.57 for all our continuing capital projects.
Okay. All righty, gentlemen, I will make the motion that we authorize and sign the aforementioned encumbrances.
As read by Mr. Martin.
As read by Mr. Martin. If you'd like, I can read them individually again, but I'd prefer not to.
I don't think you really have to. What do you think, Glenn?
Okay.
You want a second, Glenn?
A second, Jen's motion.
Any more discussion on the encumbrance funds? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes unanimous, we can move on from that one, after we sign them.
We should get those three copies of each.
Yeah, I know, it's going to take a while, it's like the warrants. Yeah, Chris made these out.
Middle initials are there.
Middle initials are there, yeah, I know it.
Why? Isn't that the way you appear on the ballot?
Kathy only doesn't put my middle initial.
I, is that the way you appear, appear on the ballot?
I appear like I am sitting here today.
Oh, so I see, we elected J.J. Joyce, but we didn't elect J. Joyce.
Correct.
I got you.
Correct.
Because Kathy even asked me before you signed, do you want your middle initial? I says, nah, don't worry about it.
Well.
What is your middle name?
My middle name is James.
That is awesome.
And, and school, I was known as J.Q.
I'm thinking that your parents like tongue twisters.
You all set, Glenn? You're outside?
I'm outside.
All right, the next item I have is the contract for the Sealer, Voits and Measures with the City of Northampton's Building Inspection Department for, for July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, for the amount of $3,459.
And we've already talked about the fees going up, so. How are we going to contract it with Northampton?
I've already read it, so let me.
I have too. I mean, I have everything on my computer. And when I, when I want to know something, I highlight it in yellow and I send it back to Kathy.
You good? All right, I will make a motion that we approve and enter into an agreement with Northampton to provide sealer of weights and measure services to Granby for the amount of $3,459.
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion on the article of weights and measures to pay David Narkowitz? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We only need to sign one of these, right, Chris?
No, sign them both. Because we send both over, then we'll get his original signature on it.
I'm just saying, that one I can throw away, that was all my reading material.
You don't sign the wrong one. That would be kind of funny. It's on the back. Okay, so that is done. This is done.
That one's on the inside, for some reason, that one on the back.
Ready for the next one?
When Glenn is ready here, he's still working on this. You gotta sign two.
You're all set, Glenn?
I am.
All right, the next item is for the yard waste days proposing Saturday, October 26th and November 16th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the highway garage at 15 Crescent Street.
I'm sorry, what were those dates, Chris?
October 26th and November 16th.
And they were picked out by Dave Durocher and they do not fall on holiday.
Perfect, because that upset a lot of people.
And then the next item is for the bulky waste day. That would be for Saturday, September 28th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Same place, highway garage, Crescent Street.
Really proud of your website, Chris. Not just the dates and times, but what's allowed, what's not allowed.
Sure.
Yeah, that might be very helpful.
We put out the fee on the bulky waste. Do we want to review those bulky wastes before we put them out there, though?
We have time. We can review them at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we'll review the rates, but we can put the dates out so the people can prepare.
Put the dates, but the rates we will address at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Getting a little late now, so we need to.
Yeah, I know, well, that's why, I just want to say we'll do it that.
Almost tomorrow.
Yeah, it is, you're right. For me, by the time I get home, it will be tomorrow, probably. Next item, we, I had gone out on the Cannabis Control Commission website and they have a set of proposed application and annual license fees that municipalities can charge.
Here you go, Glenn. Oh, I've got my copy. Do you need a copy?
No, I have electronic.
Okay.
Okay. The reason I want the board to establish these is we're starting to receive companies who are interested in putting in a cultivation and processing facility. I've also been contacted by someone who was interested in doing a retail establishment in Granby and we don't have a fee schedule for an application and/or annual licensing fees.
That's right.
Oh, we never did that.
Yeah, we never created this. So what I'd like to do is adopt these fees as listed on the Cannabis Control Commission website as the fees for the town of Granby for both application and annual license fees.
I thought they were decent fees, so that's some revenue.
And it's the Cannabis Commission fees, so nobody can say that we're doing anything highly low, which is recommended. And like Chris says, if we don't have these in place, when the applications come in, you get nothing.
Right.
We can take the table and just put Town of Granby on top of there, get rid of Cannabis Control Commission stuff, so.
Copy and paste, copy and paste.
Yeah, Kathy's good at that.
I don't know, is that considered plagiarism?
Municipalities are well-known for plagiarism.
Yeah.
We don't reinvent the wheel.
Sorry, I'm getting punched.
We don't reinvent the wheel. It's easier just to try and use somebody else's basic. Why do you think a lot of documents have the town of Clinton when it's the town of Granby or the town of whatever when it's the town of Northampton?
Yeah.
Is it sad that I don't think I ever noticed that?
Oh, yeah, it happens.
Fabulous.
It happens.
If you're gonna plagiarize it, at least do it the right way.
Nobody's perfect.
Allowed to use it.
So do you have any issues with the fees as outlined there, Greg?
I have no issues.
Okay, I don't have a motion and we'll move on with that one.
I will make a motion that Granby adopt the Cannabis Control Commission's guidance on marijuana establishment, application and annual license fees, and apply it to our town.
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion on the marijuana fees?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, unanimous?
Do you still have the two contracts up there?
Yep.
Thank you. Due to the hour, I really don't want to bring anything else up, to be honest with you.
I just want to bring one more thing up. It'll be real quick, I promise you. Could everybody just say yes?
No.
They're coming on, I think.
There's a green light.
There is it. Yeah, it just turns off. I see a red light, oh, so you're being lit.
You turned it off again. Now there's a green light.
Okay. Just, I just want to get it going in case we got it, it took like five minutes. If you look at this parcel 21, this is town-owned land. All I'd like to do is, on this parcel, mark number one, is have our conservation committee look at this parcel one and our parcel 21 and see how much is usable versus any conservation land. Because this parcel one will give us over 200-foot frontage on our landlocked land if we decide to go forward with all of this water and everything, which would make it more revenue increasing for the town to use 19.6 acres. So before I would want to recommend anything, I would want the conservation committee to go out and look at them and that's all I'm asking the board to consider. That's all. That's why I said it'd be real quick.
I'm okay with that.
Look at it.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to look.
That's it, we'll have Mr. Martin let them know to go out and take a look at parcels one and 21 on this map and I'm not going to show you anymore.
What's, I want to continue this, but what is their directive to look at? What are they looking at?
To see how much is usable.
Oh.
Because see, like the Stony Brook here, some of it also is conservation land.
What it's, what land?
And like, see, if you look at 5.1 here, that's actually where we, right here where we're sitting. And the Stony Brook goes right out outside there.
We have 19 acres of landlocked land.
Yeah.
Okay, so basically what we're looking to do is see how much of that would be usable to either put up a.
To use?
Yes.
Short and sweet.
Yes.
Put up what?
If we can get access to the spot, either look at maybe some business estate lots or to generate revenue for the town or actively seek someone to put a marijuana cultivating processing facility or a solar farm or any of those aforementioned.
It's currently assessed at $73,000. Lot number one, the five acres.
But we can't take that by.
No, no.
It's, no.
So we'd have to pay what they want for it.
We'd have to.
Or we can go by eminent domain, but you still have to go get an appraised value of a piece of property.
Right. And the appraised value was 73, so the lady that owns it doesn't want to pay taxes on it anymore, so I think if we offer the $73,000, she would just sell it.
How does it weigh, how do we know this?
We've had discussions.
We don't know that for a fact.
Well, she's made complaints every time she pays her tax broker that way.
Half the population.
When I was there, when she was making complaints, so I said, I'll take it to the board and see what they have to say. So that's why I'm asking you. Before we make anything, have the conservation committee look at it, just like Glenn, like Mr. Martin said, with the new business estate lots, if we can find just half of that is usable land, because we got 200-foot of frontage, we get five lots that we could put in there.
And it's in our industrial zones.
It's industrial, yeah.
I think it'd be a nice marijuana cultivation plot.
There's your industrial, that's right.
I don't think those blue salamanders would mind us growing.
You'd be surprised if they mind.
That's all I have, because we'll get them.
They minded a deal, I don't know.
How long do you think it'll take the conservation committee to go out and do?
I have no idea. I'm not answering for the conservation committee.
Okay. I just want to get it done within the 220 days before we're going to make a decision on everything else.
I think we can accomplish that.
Yeah, but you know what I'm trying to do? Be proactive.
No, I know, I get it.
And like I say, that's what it looks like on Google Earth, it's right here.
Okay, are you done?
Yep.
You want her, how much she want for?
I won't say, I won't say her name on here, but I'll give you the assesses report. Oh, okay.
All right, so gentlemen, before we leave, I'm sorry, Glenn.
Can I adjourn? We got something else?
No, I have something else, five minutes. It has come to my attention via various communications that there is trouble brewing in the fire department again. Same situation as previous, same sentiments. I have been informed by Chris that, you know, in the past, if, you know, we've been trying to talk, that we've got people clamming up and not saying anything. I'd like to find a way to break through that, whether it's, we have conversations with the fire department, they have complained that after the first incident last year, that no one from the board ever went back and spoke to them to find out if anything had changed. I wasn't here, I don't know how accurate that is, I'm only hearing it from multiple people. I'm hearing that we have shifts that aren't being covered again. And it's, I've had more than one firefighter reach out to me. So before this becomes an issue again, I'd like us to find a way to head it off at the pass.
And I'm just going to recommend this, there's a chain of command in the fire department and it should follow it.
Well, how well did that go last time?
I'm not talking about last time, that was something that was set forward, the chain of command, said every issue coming to this board, it should follow the chain of command and then it goes to Chris, Chris feels the need, he brings it to the board.
And I spoke to Chris about it. That's why I'm asking you if you guys are willing to at least talk to firefighters, talk to members of the department if they want to talk.
I have no issue speaking with people from the fire department at all.
Are you comfortable reaching out to them and saying, hey, I'm here if you need to, if you want, if there's something you want to say?
I can tell you, when this all happened before, many people reached out to me and talked to me about it, so I don't know. And I haven't heard anything from, since last time, except what we spoke about a few weeks ago, regards to the things that happened at the school. I haven't heard anything besides.
Which we have not dealt with.
But I'm saying, I haven't heard anything else and, no one's reached out to me and I know before a lot of people reached out to me. And I know we did go back to the fire department at one particular time for that, but, you know, we're always open to anybody that wishes to come to speak to us as a board or individually.
And I know that we're open to that, I don't know that they necessarily feel that we're open to it.
The only thing they have to understand, if they're going to start using names, Massachusetts general law comes into play and if they're going to use people's names, those people are allowed to be present at their choice. Okay? Just because they want to talk about somebody and they don't want him around, that don't cut it, because that ruins Massachusetts general law and we can't violate that.
I don't necessarily think that that is the issue.
That was one issue the last time.
It very well may have been, I don't think that is the issue now.
Okay. Long as they're willing to follow the law.
I think their issue is more with not feeling heard from us.
From us?
From us.
It's the first I have heard of anybody reaching out to us, besides what you're just saying, so I don't know. How can they say that, no one's reached out to me, even called me?
Okay.
Nobody has called me either and I was the liaison and you're the liaison now, if I remember right, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so when everybody, when we had it last time, I talked to everybody that wanted to talk, I think everybody here knows that, and nobody's reached out to me when I was after that, like Glenn says, and I haven't heard anything. But only there was one incident when some members wanted to meet with the board and we said, fine, we came back here to meet, once they found out that the individual they want to talk about was here, they turned around and left. They have to understand, if they want to talk about it, anybody, that individual has rights and Massachusetts general law protects those rights.
I'm not.
No, I'm not saying, I'm just saying it for the camera, as I'm saying, I'm not saying it to you, because they did walk away the last time.
But I would ask if someone feels, if they're being treated unfairly or such, that they file a complaint, a formal complaint to be addressed.
Properly.
Properly, correctly. That's all, I mean, I don't want to get into an area where people are just saying things and stuff like that. If people have facts that they want to bring forward and file a complaint, then all means we'll look into that complaint. You know, it just, I was here for, for last time when a lot of that happened and just concerned that some of that, not important, but kind of tore our fire department apart.
Our fire department is so fractured, it's not funny.
Well, that's the point I'm making, where people chose sides and stuff like that. But again, this is the first thing I have heard from it. I know several people in town that are firefighters that I know well and I haven't heard anything. So I don't know where, I'm just, that's all I'm saying.
I mean, if you'd like.
It's not true or untrue or nothing like that, that's all.
Well, no, I'm saying, if you'd like, I can send you the messages that I have received, I will take away who sent them to me. But if you guys would like to see the sentiment they're expressing.
I'll go along with Glenn, there is a complaint process to file, let them file what the complaints, right, Glenn?
That's where I am right now and we'll definitely follow up on it completely. I just remember it was, it was not just for the firefighter, the fire department itself, but also for the town. And, you know, so I want to make sure that it's handled better.
And that's why I'm bringing it up now, because it's been brought up.
And that's kind of the way we kind of addressed it last time, we tried to get input from individuals and trying to bring it together as a community. And again, some people liked it, some people didn't like it and, you know, we can't please everybody, but I think it's important that we do here with some of the firefighters, if they have concerns and things aren't going correctly or right, there is a chain of command, they can file a complaint if need be and we can follow up on it.
So there, your stance, I guess, is you're only going to listen to a complaint if it's gone through a chain of command?
If it's.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, that's why I'm asking.
If someone is saying, is making a statement about someone, yes, because when that comes to that, is that I want facts and then a statement and a complaint, there should be facts attached to that. So if it becomes, becomes something that we need to look into, we will.
Because you remember, if they're coming to us as the select board, they're coming to us as the town and we have rules and regulations we have to follow.
Correct.
And we will follow them.
We have to protect the town.
That is correct.
Which involves our departments.
Yes, involves all the departments.
You're right, it does, and I am not singling out any single person, I want that known right now.
I'm not.
I am keeping the past in the past. I just want to head off any future issues because there's a lot of rumblings that aren't pleasant and I'm not comfortable with what's happening.
And I understand that, Jen, and if someone feels that way, then they can file a complaint and that lets us do our job.
Okay.
Formally. That's just where I am with it.
I agree with Glenn.
Okay. Last thing, we just have to sign this, we approved it last time, the changes.
You said five minutes, that was it?
I didn't even take, okay, it took six minutes.
That's the Mr. Seneca letter.
It's the Mr. Seneca letter, we just added the date you asked for and I signed it, so.
Throw that back at me.
And I don't know, I don't know if any of you have been out there, but it looks very nice, is what he did for the changes.
It looks very nice.
You know? You know, we also, David and I went out there to visit Mr. Seneca again, because he had some concerns about some washouts when he has heavy rains in the stone he put down, and David was going to go and look at putting down a bigger size stone.
To keep it from coming out?
Yes.
A little bit heavier?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, there you go. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make motion to adjourn.
I'll second, Jen.
Do we have any discussions on the motion to adjourn? Ms. Leonard says no, so hearing no other things, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.